I know, but.
Oh, when will we be ready to stream? When outside and say just to say. We're good. All right.
No, it's his 30th wedding anniversary. And so they are off celebrating.
Go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is our board retreat for July 15th, our budget workshop and some other things that we're talking about strategically this evening. So let's come to order. Welcome, everyone. I hope you've had a good start to your summer and not been too hot, but I hope you've stayed out of the weather when it is hot. Do we have any? Let's go to pledge of allegiance, number three, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much.
I was looking at your belt.
My pledge to my belt. Are there any public comments, Kim? No public comments, then we'll go ahead and look at the minutes. If everyone had a chance to see those, I'd entertain a motion.
I have one change.
Okay, what would that be?
The last item, we've moved one sentence to make it.
Sorry. Yes, if you're going to speak, make sure you press your mic, everybody.
On the very last page of the minutes, that one sentence that says the motion passed six oh.
That. Oh, yeah.
That sentence has been moved down to the bottom of Michelle Fortunato's comments to reveal the correct order that the motion was made, seconded, then comments, then vote. That's the only change and that actually has already been made by Ally.
All right, good.
Move for approval is amended.
Hey, Nan. All right, Peggy, all in favor or any comments, all in favor of the motion as changed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. All right, that carries. Budget workshop, we're going to now turn the meeting over to Mr. Chris Sharp. The purpose of this budget workshop is to discuss the 2025 AC budget. Mr. Sharp will present the draft budget and will review related budgetary options.
We have our annual budget that you guys will approve next month. We're going to show where it is and. Please stop me if you have any questions or comments. Any of it? Give us just a second.
Title page looks great.
Just saying, we're just doing this this morning.
Anybody know a good budget joke or something? Okay, there we go. The clicker's working. So what I want to start with is our revenues for the upcoming budget. This will be the budget. This will be the budget 2526 starts September 1st. So our federal federal revenues, we've left the same at 163,000. State appropriations, we have increased to 19,268,663 dollars. So you'll notice that's an increase from what we're receiving now of a little over 1.7 million. Reason it's that much more is we have received the near finished runs from the state. And because our outcomes are better than anticipated, then we'll be receiving more funds in this upcoming upcoming budget year. So that, like I say, will increase to 19,268,663 dollars. Tuition and fees, we've left about the same, decreased it just a little bit. It's interesting, this, we're eight percent ahead of where we were this time last year as far as enrollment. So we, we hope that trend continues that we're up over this time last year. But I still want to keep tuition and fees that that same rate so we can be conservative with it. Our tax revenue, we have it 36 million, $432. That is an increase of about one point. Five million. That is, these are all preliminary numbers from, from Pratt. We should get our final numbers Friday, so this, this amount probably will change a little bit. If history repeats itself, the final numbers come in a little bit higher than, than the preliminary numbers. We do need to keep our eye on a bill that everybody will vote for next, next year. And what that will, will do is it will cap the business personal property taxes. So if you have a business in Potter or Randall County, they come in and look at the furnishings that are in the building, the machines, the equipment, and then you're taxed, taxed on that. So this bill, if it passes, will make the first $125,000 exempt from being taxed. So 80% of the businesses in Potter and Randall County fall under that $125,000 anyway. So basically, we're looking at being able to receive the taxes on 20% of, of those, the personal property.
Is this a federal?
It's state.
So what's the number?
I'll have to get that to you.
But you said they'll vote on it next year? Next session.
No, the public will vote on it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Currently, in Potter and Randall County, there's $2 billion worth of personal property. So we will take some, some hit. Jeffrey Dagley with Pratt is running those numbers and will hopefully have them to me early part of next week. And it'll show us what effect that'll have on Emerald College. So we, we need to keep a close eye on that because that, that will be lost revenue. Public or private gifts and contributions, we put it 64,000 ACV. We left it 401,000. Sales and services, we lowered just a little bit to 145,000. We lowered that to actuals. This is the classes that we do at the First Bank Southwest Center. Rental income is our East Campus rentals. East Campus rentals, we raised that a little bit because we had to increase rent on East Campus. Sales, we increased to actuals, what we're projecting. This is bookstore, cafe, testing, register, the, the fees that they collect. Childcare, we increased quite a bit to 851,000. That's because we've had a two, two step increase in the tuition for the childcare. We weren't charging enough at our childcare facilities, even to collect the maximum rate that the state is reimbursing us. So we've raised those tuitions so that we can get the max reimbursement. Investment income, we raised a little bit, we're still getting a good return on our CDs and then cash and tax pool. Our fund transfers, we are showing this a little bit different. Fund transfers comes from our auxiliary programs, bookstore, East Campus housing. In the past, we would show a transfer. Well, the, the revenue from auxiliaries is paying for our athletic program. So we're showing that in a different, different location in, in this presentation. And our miscellaneous income, we've raised to actuals 1.8 million, 500 and 1,857,000. Questions?
Just one, so any money that comes in from the foundation to support the school, where is that?
So it is. On another slide, remember? Yeah, when we get to that slide, I'll, I'll show you.
What are we charging?
How much are we charging? We, we've got a rental fee schedule. I can get that to you. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Different houses. Hey, Chris, how long ago did the increase happen with childcare?
So we increased it this all, or this spring, and then we're going to increase it again in October.
Did we hear anything from our parents?
For anyone? Majority of the parents are receiving assistance. And so their part just increased just a little bit.
Okay.
So not, not substantial.
Okay, good.
And Paul, words for athletics, we're still going to have more conversations before bringing detailed that we're going to meet with you guys on. What you're going to see here are just some things that are plugged for now, for the purposes of walking through overall budget.
Their part. Yes. So.
Basically, was that a five and a half million dollar increase?
Yeah, about a 5.7 million dollar increase. Any other questions on revenue? So our state allocations, as I mentioned earlier, are going up. Thank goodness, I, I think this, need to give a lot of credit to our faculty and staff for our outcomes being, being a lot better. And we anticipated or the state anticipated. Again, we're going to receive, I think, this is a near, near final report that we will receive 19,268,663 dollars.
What would we say was the increase that we, we had better outcomes than what we anticipated in what period? Most of it came from living from a high demand to high demand to do this. Of this change, so we got a big bump there. So I thought we had a lot more increase. But remember, they also used a projected model for two of the years. 2024 turned out that their projections for us were way too low to kind of do a settle off. Okay, and that's like most of the million dollars there just in saddle offs. So that was they had projected in 24, this year. Since we did hire, they did settle off with us. I just saw about $500,000 increase in our outcomes. But that, that post to 1 million did help. You're way above what we said. A lot of that did have to do with the, the finding the new list of high demand fields post our program.
If this is too complex of a question, then tell me we'll do it some other time. But basically for a student, they come in, it comes in, what completion or success amounts do we get for each? Is there, is there a basic, like if someone gets an associate and then they transfer? Like if we had the maximum amount for one student, what, on average, what would that be? How does that? I'm just trying to get some idea of what.
Those numbers.
The thing is, is you actually get extra points for certain criteria if you're just doing it also. So that adjusts the number, but I can tell you for the transfer started about $100.
Okay.
First student. And for let's say you're in a high band, you start 45%. The student gets a high demand associates and transfers, talking about $5,000.
Okay.
What would the cost be for the student? Complete that?
Oh, to get the. I wouldn't know with books.
You have a questions on? This is, shows our historic state allocations. You'll notice at the very top, in 2009, we received 16,449,000. But then if you go down the, the list, you see where it decreased quite a bit until we got to your 2324 budget. That's when House Bill 8 was approved. So House Bill 8 has been very, very good to us. And I think we've, we've really done a good job of tapping in on how we can grab as much of that revenue as we can. Helping, helping students along the way. This is our avaloury of taxes. Again, these numbers will change whenever we get our final numbers on Thursday or Friday. Currently, our tax rate is 0.21556. That's made up of two, two separate taxes. First one is the M and O, maintenance and operation. That's what we use to maintain our campuses and run our, run our campuses. That tax rate is 0.15893. Then our INS rate, and INS is what we use to service the, the debt payments every year. That is set at 0.05663. So currently, our overall tax rate is 0.21556. You can see Potter and rental counties has a little over $17 billion worth of value. Our M and O collections are 33 million and our INS is 11 million. If figures stay like they were given to us, the preliminary numbers stayed like that, then we will receive $1,268,000 more than we received last year. Any questions? Comments on that? And we'll have the, the numbers, the final numbers on Friday. And so Jeanette can do her magic and then we'll get you the accurate numbers on what the tax rate will be. You recall, you guys will need to meet again and take a vote on the max tax rate that, that we're going to charge. But we'll, we'll talk about that towards the end of the presentation. Questions on that? Here is a slide that shows our historical tax rate. You can see on the, the far right, in 21, we lowered the tax rate. In 22, we raised it, but that's when we. got the rest of the, the bond money. It came in, so we had to raise the INS a little bit to, to make those payments. 23, we lowered it a little bit. 24, we lowered it a little bit. And then we'll, we'll see on for this upcoming budget where everything lands. But I, I think we've done a really good job of keeping the tax, tax rate low and keeping it within reason. Questions, comments? So here are expenses. So appointed personnel and wages is 44,195,259. What this includes is we are proposing a one-time payment to all full-time employees of 2.5%. I've got a slide here next couple of slides that, that speaks to that. But these this figure includes, includes that one-time payment. Unappointed personnel, we went up a little bit on it. Adjunct faculty, we're able to go down a little bit on it. And then overload faculty, we kept, kept the same. Student wages, we kept the same. Fringe benefits, we had to go up because our insurance, health insurance went up. And then whenever we give a raise or a one-time, we have to pay fringe benefits on that as well. Supplies have gone up a little bit. Supplies are primarily where they went up is in health science, tech ed, and then our baseball needed a little extra money. And then inflation is still, still pretty high. So things are, things are more expensive than they were last year. Travel, we went down a little bit, about 40,000. Capital equipment, we went down a little bit. I've got a slide that shows what we're asking for in the capital equipment. Intingencies are at this point, 1,640,000. That number will probably change whenever we get, get our final numbers in from the, from the axes. And then our other department expenses is increased $3 million. I've got a slide that shows what those increases are. In our special, this is, we, we have a rolling stock fund. You remember anything that has wheels or a motor? We purchased out of this rolling stock fund. This is where it's landed for reporting purposes. So a lot of that is the rolling stock and then the other is I mean, special events that we pay for, for the faculty. So our expenses are 93,958,375. If you remember, our revenues were the same, so we're presenting you guys with a balanced budget at, at this, this time. Questions, comments?
Yeah, lapped salaries included in that 501 appointed personal wages.
We have what?
Lapped salaries.
Salaries?
For, for positions that are in lifetime.
Yes, that, those are in here. Any other questions? So the 59, where I told you, we've gone up 3 million. It's so the, the numbers on the 2025 column, these are actuals as of the end of June. So you can see what all makes up our other department expenditures. It's professional fees, insurance, which insurance is going to go up. That's to ensure our buildings and vehicles. Maintenance and repair, you can see we've almost spent, well, we have spent a million dollars more than we did last year. We have some old buildings that just maintenance is becoming a real problem and it's really expensive to maintain. Utilities are going up as well. You can see we still have two months to go and we've pretty close to spending what we spent last year. Scholarships are these are scholarships we give to the athletes and then some of it is the money we pay for Thrive. Our, our portion of the Thrive lease, our legal lease taxes. We've put, that, that's going to go up. You, you can see it's 1.9 million at, at this point. Still have two months to, to go. Cost of goods and goods sold. Those numbers are made at the end of the fiscal year by the auditors. So of course, everything has gone up. So you know, the, the cheeseburger we sell costs, costs a lot more to, to make. And so cost of goods and services have just gone up. So all of these increases amount to right at $3 million more than what we budgeted for this current.
Cause I'm having a hard time.
Yeah.
Let me ask. What we're seeing for 25, that 13 million? The 13 million number? Is that, is that an incomplete year?
Yeah, that's just through June.
So we, you didn't do any sort of a, of an extrapolation of what you expect that this year to be?
So we, we looked, we've looked at and projected kind of where, where we'll be at the end of this fiscal year.
In the previous slide?
Yeah, so that's, that's what's showing in. See the?
The 16 and then the nine.
I saw, I thought I saw. Oh, that 16, is that the extrapolated number? That's what you think it's going to be?
Yeah, that's, 16 is our current budget. We think it's going to be 19.
I'm still not communicating, I'm sorry. You're at 13 million actual for 10 months. You've got two more months. And so that number will go to 19.
Well, keep in mind, if you look to look at the cost of goods sold, that, that will come in after we get the, our auditors in. And so we'll, we'll make a journal adjustment and have those, those numbers. So that 13 million is, is really more in, in what it's showing because we need to put the cost of our goods sold in there.
Okay, so what would you expect the, if we were at two more months later, what do you expect that 13 million to turn into?
Right at 19 million.
Think you've got $5 million to spend in two months.
Yeah, because the cost.
So it's not that big of a, if, if that's where we're at. When we were looking at it before, when, when I'd understood we were moving a plus $3 million of expense in that other category. And that's not really right. Because basically, if you're going to be at 19, then that's not an increase.
I think it's, I think what you're seeing is it's, it's an increase in budget because we under, but we only budgeted that 16 million, but we're going to come in closer to 19 million. So if you're comparing budget to budget, we are increasing the budget 3 million as a result of our actuals for this section coming in about 3 million over what we anticipated.
Got it. So really, we're, that was a, I was making a mistake in comparing because that, that previous slide was a comparison to budget, not to actual.
Correct.
So the increase in expense is really expected to be what? This year?
Probably.
What are we really increasing over what we expect actual to be?
For, for this, this year?
For, for next year's budget? What are we expecting the increase to be in expense? We projected the actual, the expected increase in revenue.
Yeah.
So what are we expecting the expense increase?
So we, we expect the current budget to come in at about 19 million.
Current actual.
Correct. So.
But that's just in that one line item. Go back to the previous slide that talked, showed all the expenses. And that, that should, that's the one line item of other department expenses. What I hear you saying is if you were really looking at actual, see, I was comparing the ADA, which is last year's budget. So this year's new budget, this looks like we're increasing the budget by five and a, five and a half million, 5.7 million. But that's not really right because actual is, is not ADA.
Right.
Because actual, you're telling me you think is for sure 3 million more. Right? In, in the other department expenses, but we don't know what the increases or differences are in the other line items. That's where I'm asking, what do you really think that ADA actual is going to be?
It's going to be the 19 million.
No, sorry. The 88 million that you talked, I may not be being clear. The 88 million dollar budget. Where do we think we're going to be at the end of the year, actual to budget in 20, in this 24, 25?
Preparing budget to access.
I can't tell you that because we, we've got like unfilled positions that we have salary savings on. We, we have some categories that we're not going to spend budget on. But I can tell you that the 590 is going to be more than the 16 million that we have budgeted.
I, I, I agree, I'm, I'm not challenging that. I'm fine with that. I mean, if you told me that our expenses for the end of 25 are going to be 92 and a half million or something and we're only increasing by a million, I think we're going to feel better about that. It sounded like we were increasing our expenses a lot when, when I was looking at that. And I, and I'm, I was mistaken, that is not correct. I don't think we're going to increase our expenses from an actual number. It's not going to really be as big as what that might appear.
Over budget.
So I think which, what would be helpful would be, and so when we're coming back in August would be to not only have the original budget for 24, 25, but extrapolate as best we can by line item to say, this is what we think we're going to come in at by the end of 25, to then be able to compare it for the new budget for you to look at. Yep, we can do that.
I think that would just help us understand really what are we increasing this?
Absolutely, makes a lot of sense. Yep, we'll do that.
That's going to be 3 million more, 88 is going to actually be 91.
Please.
Or more. It would make a whole lot different than the 93. Is that what you're saying?
Thanks, Johnny, we'll do that.
Any other questions? Well, this is our one-time compensation that we're proposing. So it'll be a 2.5 one-time payment of all full-time employees. That will be 1,121,258. But what we want to do, if your 2.5% doesn't amount to $1,250, then we're going to make $1,250 the minimum amount that someone will, will receive. So if you make 50,000 or less, then that 2.5 won't come up to 1,250, $50. So anybody making less than $50,000, we're going to pay a minimum payment of $1,250 to them. That make sense? Then we have our yearly step increase for faculty, which is $500. So the one-time payment, then the step increase, those added together amount to 1,218,758. Questions, comments on it?
Chris, when is this going to?
We, we haven't talked about that. Last time we did it, we did it in December and we've done it in January. So we, we haven't really set it at this, this point.
So, so we're not talking about a raise, we're talking about a one-time.
Correct.
What did we do last year?
Last year, we gave a 4% raise.
What is the average generally? I mean, like what would average employee get? What 50 is the minimum, but like what are we really talking about for?
Her. So. 60 times. So not 15. We gave part-time a raise last year. Historically, we don't increase theirs that, that often. We, we have done adjustments. If you recall, three or four years ago, we brought everybody up to a minimum of $15 an hour. Then our HR does a really good job of, of keeping keeping the pay as according to industry. So we, we feel like we've got our part times in a good position. And it just takes money.
Part-time position.
What?
Hard to build part-time position?
Not, not too bad. It I, I don't have any part-time positions, so.
It mainly college students.
It is. You are here. We're in the place. Has game changed yourself? $15? And most of our part-timers? More questions on that? This is our A&amp;I projects, A&amp;I is alterations and improvements. But the first column on the left is for campuses on Amarillo. We have 75,000 for unplanned projects. Again, our, we've got a lot of buildings that are old, water lines that break, all kinds of stuff. So we have $75,000 to, to cover that. Building drainage corrections, we have 25,000 for that. LED lighting upgrade, we have 65,000 for that. This is a This is a program we started probably five or six years ago to upgrade all the lights in, in the buildings to LED. We are about seventy-five percent complete, uh, this point. So we're, we're gonna continue until we get everything, uh, converted to LED. Painting and small repairs, we have. Fifty thousand, parking lot seal coating and repairs, uh, seventy-five thousand. Carpet and flooring replacement, fifty thousand. Classroom furniture replacement, we have a hundred thousand. Uh, whenever, uh, student life in our IT department get into their new location, that'll leave several classrooms on Bird and Purcell's, uh, available, and we'll start teaching classes in there. So we need, uh, desks and furniture in those locations. Uh, new storefronts, uh, upgrades on all campuses, we have forty thousand. And then the, uh, AMAG system, uh, on campuses, that's our, where we swipe, uh, a card and unlocks the doors. So total, uh, A and I projects, five hundred and forty thousand dollars for Amarillo campus. East Campus Housing, A and I Projects, uh, we have two hundred and forty thousand for painting. I did a tour out there, uh, last week. We have some really nice houses, um, but, uh, they need paint, especially on the outside. Uh, it's, a lot of it's peeling and, uh, wearing off, so, uh, we're taking it in stages. And, uh, as we go. Then you'll notice, we, uh, we have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for, uh, electrical upgrades. So the code has changed. Uh, so anytime we go in and replace the HVAC system in these houses, we have to, um, put in a new, um, breaker box. And the breaker box has to be moved outside of the house or in, in the garage. Uh, all these houses are, do what?
Have a cutoff.
Uh-huh, have a cutoff. So all these houses are old, and, uh, they were in the kitchen or in a closet or, or somewhere like that. So it takes, uh, anywhere from six thousand to about twelve thousand dollars, depending on where it's located, to, to move those. So, uh, this, this only gets us about eighteen to twenty houses. Uh, but like I say, we're, we're doing it, uh, whenever we replace the, the air conditioning in the, the units.
Ask one question on that. The last time I looked at this, it's been several years. The cost versus what we actually made, we were actually making about a million dollars a year. And if these numbers are correct, then if we're bringing in three-point-four and our expenses are three-point-four million, so we're making three million now off those houses?
No, we're with, uh, when we take out all of our expenses, we're making about six-hundred-and-sixty thousand.
Okay, so there's more expenses than these right here. And I just say that in light of all that's going on in that area with.
Yeah, this is just A and I projects.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we were making in, I, I think we'll get back up there, um, soon as we. Don't have to do the electrical or. Okay. So total for, uh, A and I projects on East Campus Housing, three hundred and fifty-two thousand. A and I Projects, uh, we need to do paint and small repair, uh, unplanned, uh, projects. And then carpet and, uh, flooring. So we have a total of thirty thousand dollars for the Hagie Center. Our Dumas Campus, uh, we're doing LED, uh, lighting upgrades there as well. Uh, parking, uh, seal coat, uh, fifty thousand dollars, carpeting, flooring, twelve thousand, painting, small repairs, six thousand. And, uh, other unplanned, five thousand. We have, uh, a total of eighty-three thousand, uh, dollars for A and I Projects. Dumas Campus, Hartford Campus, uh, uh, if you remember, last time we were out there, uh, we constructed a truck track, uh, behind the building, mainly to keep down the dust and, uh, the dirt flying. We had a lot of complaints, so we put a cleechy track down. It's working really well, but the weight of the trucks, um, there's parts of the, the track that wash out. So we need to, uh, put in more cleechy and, and move some dirt and, and that kind of stuff around. Uh, we're also doing LED, uh, lighting upgrades there. Uh, then we have, uh, some money for carpet, flooring, paintings, uh, small repairs, and then other, uh, unknowns. So that, uh, has a budget of, uh, fifty thousand dollars. That's our complete A and I projects. I will say, um, we could use a lot more for A and I. Uh, and as I said, we have, uh, we have buildings, some buildings that need new roofs. We have buildings that need, um, HVAC system, uh, plumbing is a problem, uh, electrical. So, um, uh, keep in mind that although this is, uh, quite a bit of money, we could always use, use more on, on our buildings.
You, if, if, in the ideal world.
Well, we, we've got a couple of buildings that totally need remodels, so. I can.
And if we don't do those repairs, what's a good?
We don't do them now?
I'm not saying right now, but over the next few years.
More. Yeah, we had ten percent increase a year.
Chris, are those buildings out at East Campus that you're talking about? Or all?
So.
Anywhere.
Uh, they're all over. We've, we've got, uh, some buildings here, um, East Campus, uh, one, the main building needs a new roof out there. Uh, HVAC. Our, uh, betting hall. The HVAC in there is old, old. Needs remodeled.
I think we need some more printer.
Notice that, too.
Sorry about that. I don't know why that back page is lighter than the front page.
It's like almost eleven. We have some, some certain buildings.
You have dot matrix printers.
Provides the air for, for this campus, but you still have to have units, uh, on individual building. Uh, to, um, get the, the, uh, AC and the, the heat. Yeah. Next slide, uh, just shows a breakdown of the capital. So, uh, academic outreach, we have, uh, twenty thousand dollars there for capital expenditures. Academic affairs, hundred-and-fifteen thousand, uh, academic learning support, fifty thousand. Hartford, we have fifty thousand dollars. And then, uh, Moore County, we have a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. If you drop down, uh, you'll notice, uh, uh, business affairs, we have, uh, almost one-point-two million. That's where all the A and I projects, uh, go. We, we just charge them out of the, the business office. Any questions on capital? Capital is anything five thousand dollars or?
Is that out of our M and O fund, or is that out of the bond?
M and O. So I talked about our rolling stock fund. This has been a really good fund, uh, for us. If you weren't here when we created it, uh, it was created basically so, um, if we need a, a truck, so we're not having to budget the whole amount of a truck, uh, uh, to come out. So we pay for a truck, say a truck is sixty thousand dollars. So we pay for it out of this, this fund. And then, uh, we multiply it by five percent for five years. So we get a, uh, appreciation cost of it. And then we divide it by five years. Uh, vehicle, uh, we depreciate over five years. And so, uh, whatever that, that number is, is what that department pays back to this fund. So we're basically leasing to ourselves, um, these, these vehicles. And so, um, say we buy a truck this year. In five years, that department will have it paid for plus, uh, fif- fifteen percent more. And so that money's there, uh, to replace that truck when, uh, when it needs to be replaced. So, uh, request out of this fund, um, our, uh, physical plant needs a, needs to replace a pickup. They need a new pickup. Uh, they need a utility, uh, two utility vehicles. Uh, they need two golf carts. Uh, this is how, um, our plumber, our, um, mechanic, uh, gets, gets around campus. They have all their tools and supplies. And our East Campus Housing, uh, we need to replace a nineteen ninety-six truck with a new one. So if anybody needs a, use. And then Hartford.
For you to take it.
Hartford needs a passenger van. So total, um, what we're gonna spend out of the rolling stock is, uh, two-hundred-and-ten thousand, eight sixteen. But, uh, with the lease payback, uh, we'll be receiving three-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, uh, from the leases paid back from the, uh, various departments. So we have, we'll be receiving quite a bit more than what we're gonna be spending out. Comments, questions on our rolling stock? So this is our auxiliary. It's really busy. This is a summary. So this, this is, um, net of, of the, um, of the fund. So it's, it's revenues and expenditures is, is what we're showing in this, this budget line. So A and I for, uh, East Campus, uh, rentals is, um, three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. A and I for, uh, Hagie is thirty thousand. Intingencies, uh, is eighty-seven thousand. This is where we've put in the, uh, one-time two-point-five percent, uh, increase for, uh, the staff that works in the auxiliary departments. Anything with a parentheses is a positive. So that, that would be revenue that we're bringing in. If it doesn't have parentheses, then it's, uh, an expenditure. So we, we are projecting, uh, the bookstore to bring in, uh, a profit of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. Uh, East Campus Tools, nineteen thousand. Iggy, uh, Childcare Center, uh, will cost, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. You can see that's getting quite a bit better. Um, we, we have, uh, six-hundred thousand, uh, budgeted. For this year is a loss. Iggy Food Program, uh, forty-five thousand in revenue. Uh, AC Cafe, uh, will cost a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. That should be getting better. Uh, we are having to increase the prices of, of, on our menu. So, uh, we're, we're doing kind of a gradual increase. So that, uh, shouldn't be, uh, as bad as what that looks. Uh, concessions, uh, will bring in, uh, nine, nine thousand in concessions are at, uh, First Bank Southwest. We have volleyball games and volleyball tournaments here. Uh, let's see. AC, uh, property rental, uh, twelve thousand. Uh, our payment plan will bring in, uh, fifty-eight thousand. East Campus Housing, six-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand. Rentals on East Campus, uh, ninety-six hundred. Institutional scholarships, this is our employees, um, that, uh, come, come to school here or their, their siblings. They come for free, so we, we pay for that out of the, uh, auxiliary.
Children.
Children, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The next six categories are, uh, student, um, the student organization, student travel. All of that is, we collect a fee, uh, in their tuition. And so, uh, all of these are paid for by that fee, so it basically zeros out. Uh, Innovation Outpost, we're showing, uh, to bring in a revenue of, uh, about seventy-five thousand. We're hopeful that that will be quite a bit more with, um, uh, we're receiving some, uh, some grants. And so, uh, we do grant accounting separately from, from the budget. So we will, we, we'll be receiving some, some more revenue, and we can, we can let you know, uh, kind of what that revenue is, as, as we go along.
What types of grants?
Do what?
What types of grants?
A grants.
Grants through.
In the last four, our, our athletic, uh, department, as Dr. Connor said, uh, we are gonna come to you, uh, later on with, uh, figures and, and revenues and all that, that kind of stuff. Total, um, by the time we pay for everything, uh, there will be a, it's nine-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, thirteen dollars. Do what?
Sixty-eight, you said ninety.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at a old.
You want my glasses?
Yes. Nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight, uh, thousand, thirteen dollars. Questions? Our next step, or should we're doing the budget retreat right now? Uh, later, in fact, Friday, we will get, uh, the certified values, so we can, um, tally this up, put a bow on it, and then we will need to meet in early August, so that you guys can vote on the maximum tax rate, uh, that, that you wanna have. And then we will come back in late August, and you guys will approve, um, the, uh, budget and the tax rate. Questions, comments? I will say, if there's anything that you didn't see and you want more info, just call and let me know. We can get you whatever, whatever you want.
For future presentations like this, that was difficult to see.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, the big, big slots with lots of numbers on it was really difficult.
Okay, good, good feedback.
Do we have any projections on, uh, what we're making off? Ability or his memberships?
Yes, um, I don't have those numbers on me, but I, I can get them to you.
There was. To Bill.
I think y'all looked at how many people were coming. You remember what those numbers were? Head count of. I, I can look into it and get them to you.
Anything else? So does anyone need a break right now, or do you just wanna take breaks when you need them? What would you like to do? Just keep going? Just keep going, let's just keep going. Please feel free to get up and take care of your needs as you move. So we're going to move into now, Chris, thank you for that. We're going to move into our strategic planning session led by Dr. Connor. Yay.
Just gonna get the mouse.
The dry erase markers?
Yeah. You got a whiteboard and everything? Oh, yeah, but we're not using it yet, so you're fine. So I'm excited. I mean, this isn't only my first retreat as it relates to budget, but it's the perfect time to kick off our strategic planning process for the coming year, right? Because we know we have gotten until next August and we need to have a whole new strategic plan. So what I wanted to talk about today and do hopefully a little bit of fun visioning with you all is to just have this be the first place to start getting some thoughts and ideas as we'll be working, continue to working with you all along with getting voices from our other constituents and we're building out this plan. So as Chris mentioned, I wanted to point out that we're forty two days before the start of classes and we are up eight percent right now in both headcount and credit hours. Some of the highlights of that, our Washington campus is up four percent. And you can see our east campus is like blowing it out of the water. We've got twenty two percent increase in credit hours out of our east campus. And what also is really important to note is that both in our new students and our returning student enrollments, we're significantly ahead of our five year average. So we're seeing things that we haven't seen in several years that's driving this growth. And so a few of the initiatives that the institution has launched that's really helping with this. One is the Registration Hub. So that was a whole ton of work that the team did to really work through a whole nother process that helps us serve students in getting them enrolled better and faster. The AC Success Coaches have also taken on additional roles from a standpoint of proactively calling individuals to get them re-enrolled. And so the quote that I have is it's the largest student reenrollment effort in Amarillo College's history. We're proactively identifying and contacting students so we can get ahold of them and help them get registered for the fall. And then, and then what all of our teams are continuing to work on as we're seeing this growth, we need to make sure that we have sections and courses available for them to get registered into. And so working to make sure that we have that availability so that our students can make their schedules and take the classes. So we're really excited. We're looking strong for fall and that's a tribute to everyone at the institution that's been working on this. So then I wanted to take a look at the strategic plan timeline. So today's when we're launching this work with you all as a board. In August, I have some other work I'll be doing with faculty and staff during convocation to kick that off with them. Then we also want to incorporate it in the strategic planning process of facilities master plan. So we really need to do some work, not just to get an evaluation of our buildings and what we want to do with our buildings, but as part of that, find someone that will also work with us in looking at our programs so that we can really consider what programs need to grow, which ones maybe need to are in decline, which are new programs we don't have yet, and where should they be situated on what campuses? And so the timeline for this works well in that our strategic priorities and our plan should be driving the decisions we're making in our facilities plan. So we'd like to come around January to get an RFQ out with you all. Hopefully then in March, we would get someone selected that would come alongside and do that work with us. By next year at this time, we'll be bringing forward at the Board Retreat a proposal for our mission, vision, values, as well as our new strategic plan and priorities for you to review and give additional feedback for approval in August. However, there's going to be lots of engagement activities going on during this time. And this isn't the only time that you all will be engaging in this type of work. So when I talk about engagement activities, that's going to be throughout the year, fall and spring, having different activities and connecting with students, faculty and staff, community and businesses. So all different ones to meet with them and get their voices, their feedback, their thoughts to kind of turn out what we're seeing as our high level strategic priorities. And then once we get those and feedback from you all on those as well, then we need to set quantitative goals related to each one. So we're numerically able to track our attainment to goal. Also in this work, before we we roll it out, we need to be working with faculty and staff because they need to understand how do they apply what they do every day that to ensure that we're meeting those strategic goals. I want them to be able to make that connection. And all of that's going to then lead to our new strategic plan. So I wanted to take a look at the current strategic plan and kind of the status of some of the numbers that we were looking at. And so as you can see here for retention rate. So the work since we started the the current strategic plan in two thousand and twenty, our fall to spring retention rate has increased by five percent. Our fall to fall retention rate has increased by six percent. Our graduation rate is increased by twelve percent, transfer rates by twenty one percent. And then our completion rate has increased by twenty seven percent since the last strategic plan was started. So really great work you can see on completion rate. It was at forty nine percent when the institution started the strategic plan and it's at sixty three percent right now. So our no excuses strategic plan, the mission and vision. So the mission has been transform our community and economy through learning, innovation and achievement. And the vision of AC has been to love our students to an eighty percent completion by two thousand and twenty five. That eighty percent number was set as the stretch goal. So as I just mentioned on the prior slide, we've had great success in increasing retention rates and completion rates by twenty seven percent. If you're looking at our stretch goal, you can see that on that eighty percent goal, we're at seventy nine percent of the goal right now to heat that, to reach that eighty percent. And so while we're building our new strategic plan, these are still the things we're going to continue focus on to see what we're able to achieve in the coming year with the extension of that. And then I also wanted to put up the values and the value statements that AC has had under this strategic plan. So the college is creating a no excuses philosophy through actions that display the following values. And I tried to, I just put a couple of keywords up there, so there wasn't a ton of words up on the screen. Carrying through wow, and so that's talking about everyone that comes in should say, wow, you are so helpful, supportive and open. Carrying through innovation, to be a roadblock remover, look for ways to help others and improve processes. Carrying through fun, so have fun, celebrate each other, make our work fun and effective. Carrying through family, show we care about our students and each other, share information, trust and openness, put the needs of others before our own, and then carrying through yes. And that's always think yes first and then find solutions rather than saying no and be passionate about our jobs and helping each other. So we're going to roll into what I hope you all will work with me on, on really generating some ideas. A lot of it's not getting anything firmed up tonight, just getting those ideas and juices flowing that are going to help me inform kind of where we're heading as I'm looking for other voices. And I know all of you know of this, whether it be your place of business or work you've done with AC. But just as a reminder, when we're thinking about what our mission is, that should tell people what's our purpose, why we exist, who do we serve and what makes us unique? For vision, we want to look at what, where, who do we want to be in the future? This is aspirational. And then for values, what ideals do we hold most dear? What is most important to us? And when we build these, and why I want to start with this discussion tonight and then start working on our strategic priorities is when you have these, all of those should be what everyone's looking at to drive all of our decisions that we make over the timeframe of the next strategic plan. Not only the board, but at every level through the organization, when we're sitting down to make these decisions, these should be what we're going back to. So first, and I've got a few different short engagements for you all. What I'd like to have y'all do is to break out into small groups and I've got a handout. And so I was thinking maybe if we do three, three, so maybe Irene, David and Michelle, and then Johnny, Paul and Peggy, and then Annette to John and then JD, just want to, because I know you're more off the number here a little.
Give me to roam.
You can roam or however you want to do it. So for this first one, and I've kind of given the handouts, y'all as a team just need to call out for one. And then the second page is for the second exercise is to just kind of step back in maybe five or so minutes in your small groups to think about this phrase and fill in. And I kind of have here kind of where I've just got multiple different examples down of. If you're looking at mission, so Amarillo College exists to what? What's the verb? What are we going to do? Educate, promote, transform, what do we do? Target audience, what are we here for? Who are we here for? And through means and values, what are we going to do so that we have what impacts and outcomes? And so if if y'all would just kind of talk in the small groups and just put, put words or phrases down based on those, like I said, for maybe about five minutes, and then we can kind of talk about and document what's popping up with you all that resonates as it relates to our mission.
Oh, I'm not working on it, but thank you.
There you go.
So we'll go ahead and start talking about what y'all found. And if you'll, if you, when you talk, if you'll put your mic on, just so that for those that might be watching, they've got it. But who wants to go first? And it doesn't have to be just one. If you guys had some different ones that popped out, we can get, I want to definitely capture all of them. So let's talk first about what they discussed.
What I put down is that AC exists to transform our community through education so that our students' lives are impacted for the better. We are a change agent and a gateway towards success.
I got transformed.
What's your target audience, right? Target audience?
So you said, just a little slower and I'll catch up. Target audience. So you said, just a little slower and I'll catch up. Transform.
Our community.
Okay.
Through education. So that our students' lives are impacted for the better. And we are change agents and a gateway towards success.
Okay. What else?
So what we got was Amarillo College exists to elevate our community through education so that we can equip our region's workforce for a better future.
That's good. Yeah.
Your two missions, especially your short.
You can remember.
You're good. Read it again, please.
Amarillo College exists to elevate our community through education so that we can equip our region's workforce for a better future.
What else?
Y'all are funny. He wants a cookie. They think there's a cookie involved here if we win.
Okay, what about this group?
We have Amarillo College exists to educate our community through excellent learning so that our students have success to improve their lives. Students have student, students have success to improve their lives.
Awesome. Okay. Any other words in any of these areas that you guys talked about that popped up that we may want to just add to have added to the list, even if they're not complete sentences?
I'll put AC exists to build a vibrant community. I don't know where you sort that out.
The impact and outcomes.
Through, and I'm shortening this a lot. This to build a vibrant community through high quality education. I've got student success and stuff in there, but I just.
Like the high quality education.
High quality education. And community, I don't know, you know, I mean, because to me, part of it's community engagement, part of it's.
But I can still add that, right? Because that's another component you need to think about.
Community partnerships and engagement. As if the companies are coming in, like the AI farm, energy farm, we've got to partner with them. It's going to be huge.
I would just give a little tweak on the community part. Then it's, it needs to be communities because Amarillo College is open always. We got to talk about those little towns in under there.
His picture or his quote up here, that part of our job is not just to create the highest quality employee at the lowest price. Our job is to create, engage citizens and build our democracy. So, you know, obviously that's not all in there. But I mean, if you think aspirationally, we're not just making people fit in jobs.
Because what, and that's what I was telling them, and I've been saying is the students that go to Amarillo College are the, are our community of the future. It's the ones that stay here are typically the ones that have gone to Amarillo College. Not always, but there's more of them that stay here than there are. Four years, three. Same, maybe, I'll make, if we go to other communities, but I did. Got three months, like, stay here and get all my community.
Sort of building, we're building. We're building up a more community.
I like that. I like that.
That, that actually, it's not just about math and science, those are important. Misunderstanding, we're, we're more beyond, to be a building, a complete.
Building citizens.
And then be more, I guess, of service in the full community.
Okay, anything else? Or you feel like this one, we're pretty good? Everyone good on this one? Okay. All right. So then the next one we're going to talk about is the vision. Okay. So this is the one where I was talking about that is, this is aspirational. When you're thinking, think big, think, dream big. And it's on the second page, if y'all just, the same groups are fine. But just take a few minutes and really think about in 10 years, what would you want to say that Amarillo College will be known for? Sky's the limit. Think about all the different ways that we come here next. And put together some, what's that vision? Just talk in the groups and then I want to get all of those down. What do we want to be headed from an aspirational standpoint?
People that don't have much a chance of getting an education.
Making education available to all. It should be to participants, whatever.
Man, I think that's really an important thing for Amarillo College. To have that vision to.
Well, I'm going with what Frank.
Anyone that wants to be integrated.
So a leader in raising that up, you know, raising up the.
Are we looking at just?
Well, I think we'll have lots of thoughts, several.
I think.
Yeah.
We can, true, are we going to have just one thought there?
Probably could.
Yeah.
Raising, raising the educational level of our community.
With when we think, is there a report that we have contributions to?
Just the old man saying, seven point, which includes.
Yes, how do you capture that? We can get started with the program. So who wants to go first on, where's your thoughts on the vision? What do we want to be in 10 years?
For raising the educational level of our community.
How do you do this?
Raising the educational. Our community. And making significant contributions to work.
My group came up with.
You came up with.
That will be known for being a thought leader in AI and other emerging technologies.
I thought AI, so after a good 10 years, AI is a great.
That's why I said in other emerging technologies. It will, it will, it'll replace itself with something new.
We will all be replaced if we will.
Okay, what else?
For innovating improved access to education for all.
Let me see.
What else?
We put advancing our region by redefining visionary leadership in education and workforce development.
Attracting new industry into our region because of our ability to innovate. You know, how we, how we work with companies, how we say, if you want, if you need these workers, we're going to pivot and train them in our facilities. You tell us what you need, that kind of thing. I really think that's what's going to happen.
One of the phrases I put down was that you can be the premier educator and supplier of skill for.
And I'd say that for many to guess, we don't want to bring that in. I mean, we, this, this, they have. I mean, it's the biggest innovation. We're right here in the part of the. We're the part of the. According to them, very, very exciting. For a movie like that, Rainmaker or something.
Any other phrases or thoughts? Division that we want to attach to? Well, then we will be now add.
Not, we're not just rethinking, I mean, we're going to be.
I've got some other thoughts that I thought were. This may be too, too much, but to me, I think I've always felt like our education system as a whole needs to be. And 10 years from now, that's all kind of. And I think, I think.
System where Emerald ISD and all the ISDs work with us or through us to. And we worked then with the four-year universities to create this one system that we all work together instead of. Does that make sense? That we, that we work with Emerald ISD. Kids understand education is just, it's not just a sit there. We're just lying around with this. It's got us back up to high school. And I think that goes to our conversation with Thrive and Dual Credit. But that's what I'm saying. This college will have to change in order to make this.
I don't think institutions want to be the same as they are now. And delivery system is something we haven't thought about. I mean, it's just how it's going to come to be somewhere. Each student will be able to learn whatever they want without needing an institution. They're going to have all kinds of different sources of information. Is it going to take a hold of what our product is already really defined by what the four years you should want? And so we have to revise whether that's a CD hour or a specific way that they will accept. If they won't, they don't have to redefine that. Like Johnny, especially become that four-year workshop. We do that because otherwise we're pretty much in a hole with what they want.
Four years ought to be more afraid of this time than anybody else. It should be a great.
Are going to be more threatened by whatever's happening because they are less flexible and they've got more overhead and they need, that's due to a relationship in a way that we can. Figure out how to deliver ways that they can't just go to school. It's forever and, you know, they're rigid.
What if we took all the money they spend on brick and mortar, building new buildings? You know, and all of that and vested it differently into a new kind of education. It would, it would totally change things.
I guess sports will keep them alive. I mean, I would say sports will keep them alive probably. You know, another, another thought just occurred to me is what if you look at it from, what are four years more to demand?
In years from now.
Because I don't think that somebody is going to say, you know, because you got a finance degree. Texas Tech, I think you were really wrong.
All over the place.
By the career, I think so those. We can deliver a story, you know, the naked class. And we can go back to the elements and that becomes what? They don't answer what our year AI versus the free and the computer science. I think those definitions.
Now, I, I think too, I love all this because I think our, our outcome for our students need to lead to that career. We need to lead them to that. We need to show, you know, instead of just saying, all right, you're done, go find a job. Because we're, we work in the industry, be like Bell or whatever. They're going to already grab onto our learners and they'll become their future workforce while they're in our, our space.
Well, and if we can find a way to do that, I can see that one day, I would take the finders. That's what I just transferred. Did they get a job?
It's coming.
Yeah, it's coming. So if we can find that link between those without having to always hand off.
So will we be known for producing students? Help me work. We'll be known for producing or producing is.
I can't get where I'm going.
Keep thinking about that, it'll come.
I mean, but it was sort of like.
It's sort of student, student education and job attainment. It has to be that link to your career.
Educating students of excellence, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I've been in lifelong students for critical thinking, social solutions. I've put roadblocks, that's not really any.
Problem solving.
Well, that's especially true if they're really saying that it's not just one degree you get. Work that hard, but we're actually having to be trained every, for about years. And then you're going to make the back right.
Hope you can read that.
I will be able to, and I'm not looking and remembering, so, no, this is great.
Awesome.
Okay, so next. You tired yet?
No.
Just a little bit more. Okay, so this is values. So I'm going to pass around a list of kind of some core value statements that I pulled together. And some of them, they might sound alike, but sometimes right words speak to people differently. So I've listed all and we can, you guys can go beyond this page, but what I would like to do is have you all look at this in your groups again. And kind of sort this list. What we're trying to come up with is what are these top values for us? So if you consider sorting them by saying, like you can put an A next to, like I just did some example, write an A next to, this is essential to Emerald Hall, this is an essential value of ours. B, it's an important value, but it's secondary. And then C is not a current priority. So if y'all would take a few minutes together to kind of pick, maybe pick up the, make sure you've got maybe a 10 that are values that are As. But then let's talk about what's bubbling up. If you can add other values, if you see something that's not on here that you want to add to just kind of frame, what are we saying we are about?
Student success is on here twice, but with different.
Slightly different language. So just whichever, whatever suits you.
The place across from it does sell.
Now you got it.
What's the place across the street where you can drive through and get drinks? It's coming. You can get to go drink, but they staple it shut. See and take it home. In Borger, you could go through here and just buy a beer or a red drawl just to open like this.
Forty years ago.
Poor man.
Okay. So what's the person? It can either be the, um, the title of what's on here or just words within the definition. You just kind of get all the things that we consider as these high values. And I know you were saying a lot of you didn't have seeds. And I guess I would say there was like, if there was something I, now that I think about it, I really kind of didn't include it. Like it was like the other side of follow our values. Um, so who wants to go first to start kind of listing out some values that we would have for AC?
To me, we're focused on that. I mean, it's always been focused on that, but right now it's like check a box, we're lucky. Or this month. I added one. It's not included, but it could probably go with, I mean, obviously these could. Trust. So I would put maybe trust and respect.
Baptist background, I thought it would say trust and obey.
I got over a mountain.
Okay, what other ones resonate for values if we're going to consider that these are when we're making all our decisions? What's the budget?
I'll offer this number five. Career and workforce readiness. Because I really think that, you know, you, you had up there, how much impact the East Campus or whatever Ernie's programs are. The, the number of students coming into it, that's going to continue to increase, I hope. But number five is, and looking at six and two, which deals with access and accessibility. I think if we get number five right, that will automatically give more access and accessibility to a different kind of learner. Someone who isn't going to be your scholarly, you know, pursuit type person, but your person that can just get in there and hands-on and get the job done skilled. They have these skills that are going to be needed to grow our community. So I think those two will grow as a result, we get five correct.
I don't think we have that one up here yet, other than there's, there's some that speak to it, but that should be another one. And Peggy, what was the end of yours? You said you were seeing something else.
Number 14, respect, they kind of go together. Guys, the rise of others. Is partnerships up there?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm talking growth and lifelong learning kind of went together.
And not the cliche lifelong learning. You know, everybody says, oh, I'm gonna be lifelong learning, but this is really. Yes, stack of old things, helping them grow in their careers. Oh, yeah, some industries go away.
That ties in with workforce rate much. Jobs do.
Y'all gone into Quick Trips in town? I was in one on South Vale, and there was a little robot cleaning the floors. And it and it saw me and it said something nice to me. Shut up, Irene, shut up. But I just thought that's different than, you know, you, I need to, I need some more affirmation. But somebody's got to program that, somebody's got to repair that, and that's just a small little thing, right? No, it's not that big of a thing.
I've never been inside of a Quick Trip. I've bought gas. Not here, but like in Dallas and so forth. I wonder if they're all like that.
I I don't know, it was later at night.
So what, anything else we want to add? Or we feel like we've got a pretty good list here? Well, we have. So fiscal responsibility or? Pretty good now?
This was by outcomes.
Kind of good with that right now? Okay, awesome. Um, so what I just wanted to talk through are the values and. A way to think about, is this making sense if these are gonna be the types of things that, like I said, again, this this is getting the ideas out there, we need to refine. But you want to look at your values and can they, can they guide group decisions? Are they practical and application? And like I mentioned at the beginning, applicable to all of you when you're making decisions here as a board. And then also, these are gonna be things that me and my team all the way down to the institution will look to. When someone comes to me with an idea and we find these out, I'm gonna be saying, does this follow our decision values that we have? So I just want to talk a little bit with the scenario of disconservance, so.
I mean, this is for the governing board. I think shared governance and the citizens.
Considering these as as an example, so say at some point, uh, we're gonna near the end of the tuition phase, right? So that there's a lot to consider of should AC raise tuition? Right now is a debate whether they should or not, but just considering these values, do you feel like? If you're looking at the values to make that type of decision, what types of, what values do you feel are gonna help you make that decision? Do we have values in there that are gonna be practical for these types of decisions you have to make? Does that make sense? It's like, I would say one of them would be on women, you've got accessibility, right? That could raise a question, how much do you raise tuition? If you raise tuition, does that mean that less students have access to higher levels? Another value though is stewardship of resources, right? We are, we're maintaining the need, we're making financial, making good financial fiscal decisions. Because that's what we need to have our way to be in. So that's just kind of an example of, um, hey, we've got some values that could drive conversation in making the decision. But I'm interested to see what do you all feel in something like this? That these are the types of values that you would use in making decisions like that? Or if there's pieces we're missing.
The good thing now is the way that we scale. Faculty colleges is if we make it accessible to more people if we work with different relationships. And that's going to increase the resources.
Trying to make sense. But are you all feeling pretty good? Do you feel like that with this list, that even in this type of a one-off scenario? Do you feel like we've captured the different types of things? You would need to think about in making a decision that these values would lead us to the appropriate decision?
I do. I mean, I think that shared governance is a big part of it because it's not just us.
Awesome.
In fact, I guess for me, I understand what we're trying to do. I think you're getting my mind is that. That's the area, right? Something that I would say is something I would say is. That would really be one of my. The larger standard for management. So, but that can be a component of this. So that's what I'm just trying to. I don't know if that list will change. Because I think they're there, but I think we still have confidence.
Well, and that's true, again, this is just getting all those ideas out there, but then we've got months now to kind of be getting other voices and feedback to refine. What do you want to say are gonna be our values?
I would say another important though is data informed. There's two reasons. One of those would be like the fee structure. If that specific education pathway required more fees for labs and things like that, I think that's an area where we could raise fees there. Another one that we've talked about before as far as data informed. If, well, I'll give an example, in my practice, if Blue Cross Blue Shield is paying a hundred dollars for a procedure, and I'm only charging the seventy. But they're paying that, they're gonna cut it to the lowest rate. So if a lot of these, you know, pill grants and things like that are paying a higher rate, we're losing out. They can, they're just pocketing the money or keeping it, which again, they may need it, but if it's offered, are we getting money on the table? Just not raising to that rate. Now, again, that's data informed because we've got to figure out who's above the pill rate, gonna get cut off. But I think we need to look at that over time to see what we're missing out on by keeping tuition at the same rate. If those rates for pill rates things are going up.
I think what I'm hearing too is these, these high level words are things that we definitely see as a value of AC. There's much more work now to be done on the statements related to them to make sure, right? Because there's lots of ways that you can state what these words mean to our about as a value statement. Just like we were talking about too Johnny, that we need to work that, flesh that out. And what type of language do we want to use when we talk about what these values are? And I would, um, my guess is kind of by the end of this work and getting feedback from all of our different constituents. I would say we probably don't want any more than ten maybe total. But I think with this, we can keep merging and molding and.
Combining them.
Exactly, and you want to be able to remember them, right?
Yep.
Are these, are these what currently we have the values of yes and?
Yep.
And so forth.
Yes.
The five values of?
Yes.
The one thing, the one thing I would, I would just encourage us to understand. I mean, that really drove culture. And I think that's what this, these, these values are expected to do, right?
Exactly.
And so that's really important, I guess. And and I think it really made a big difference in our college, the ones that we have, which are very unique. And, uh, it made us unique. And so I'm not saying gay or nay, either way, I'm just saying I think I want to not overlook the importance of what values really are driving.
So then in addition to these, would you want us to include on the list all the values that we currently have that's something that we're contemplating continuing with?
I think it would be interesting if you ask your teams internally.
Yeah, and they're definitely, this is leading to a lot more conversations with students, faculty staff, all of it, but yeah, your all's opinion.
And and I think it also has to do with what you as the leader want to create in the culture of the college. So I, I, anyway, I I just bring that up just to, I guess, just to think about it.
Okay, so, um, just as a follow-up and kind of round it out. Is everyone feeling pretty good? Do we kind of have consensus that at least for our first blush of just getting ideas and thoughts kind of up on a board that we're kind of, we kind of captured some of that? This is really important because I want to be able to get to hear from you all as I start other conversations. And again, this is now going to drive the activities that I'm gonna have at convocation for faculty and staff. Um, and then also all along this, you all are gonna be, I'll be reaching out and we'll have other opportunities as we're going through this. And so even, so by July, it's not like you're not gonna already know where we're headed, because you're gonna be giving feedback and guidance through the whole thing. But I just thought that, um, time with the regents was the best way to kick off this whole strategic planning part. So thank you all for being willing to be open and do this with me.
Thanks for letting us be.
So if it's a five-year plan, you know, I don't say twenty-six to twenty-nine.
Oh, I did, or do we do five year? That might have just been on me. I'm used to three year.
We have had.
That's what it was. We extended, so.
I was just wondering, yeah, we continue in my mind, it was twenty-five to thirty or something like that, you know, but we're looking twenty-six to twenty-nine, right?
We could go twenty-six.
I'll definitely bid that, thank you.
A good way to start the master facility planning, uh, process, maybe to look at in twenty-eight, twenty nineteen, we did a facility utilization, uh, plan over time before our past bond. So it showed what was excess and then what we intended to do to take care of that. And so that was part of that plan. So that may be a good place to.
To start, which is why we built, no, we built it.
It's back what?
We didn't build any, we didn't put any money into build new buildings except for the police, the fire academy.
I I would encourage us also to not be afraid to say some buildings might just not need to be done.
Definitely.
We've got a lot of space.
That's the way we, with the org, was the org way that we were going to redo in a big way, and it was just thinking at the time, we decided to give everything.
No, that won't be popular. I just think at some point we've got to realize we we've got more space.
I know back from the institution, I came, we did both, so we also, but we found entire campuses. Um, but just with how online had grown, there just wasn't the need for it anymore, which is a tough conversation. Fantastic. So thank you again for that. We're gonna, um, we can grab the other folks to come in and then, um, start talking about dual credit and thrive.
Sounds good.
Quick bath of break.
Hey, quick break, quick break. Clean up my mess here. Yes. Want me to erase it?
Or just?
I told him, I at least can I can remember my writing, like he'll be back and be like, okay, what were they saying there? Okay, that's what I meant to say. We're doing a. Is, is Frank gonna run it or?
Frank, yeah.
Yeah.
Probably been bugging you all evening.
Run it or?
We did talk about for years.
Oh, yeah.
I was the one that fixed everybody, so now everywhere I go, I want to fix people, and some people that want to get fixed. Anyway. Now I was in a bleeding and like I said, I just can't think without that picture behind you. It's just so crooked, I can't even think.
And that does bug me.
So I had to go.
This is gonna leave, I'm gonna go eat, I said, I just need you to stay for the.
Depends how much there's out. Sometimes I'll go back with an extra bag with a bag. You went walking.
Back to order, back to order. All right, next up, thank you, Dr. Hunter, for our strategic planning session. We appreciate that, an opportunity to work through that as the initial stage of the planning for the str- strategic, uh, plan for the next several years. Dual credit and thrive is next up, and I already see language that I like. I love the way that sounds, so I want to turn it over to you.
Okay, awesome, and you can thank Kevin for that idea.
Kevin, great idea.
Badger bound came out with that.
I like it.
Okay, awesome.
It takes a village.
So what we wanted to do was, everyone's been hearing about thrive, right? And what are we gonna do, what's gonna be coming out of thrive? And the team's been kind of working on a possible solution to move forward. Last month, we, um, presented it to the finance committee and got a lot of great feedback there. And so we just thought for the retreat, it would be another great opportunity, obviously not for decision today. But to walk everyone through what we're looking at and thinking, so then we can get even more feedback, guidance, things we can look at so that then we can, you know, hopefully in the near future, come up with what we're gonna be doing going forward. And so as, um, we already noticed here, if we were moving into this new proposal from Thrive, one of the ideas is we would call it Badger Bound, um, for that. So just as a reminder, um, when you're thinking about our current Thrive status. So the last cohort that's covered by the partnership agreement, um, for Thrive is the graduating class from Emerald High School in twenty twenty-seven. So those are students now that would be entering their junior year. And so we're looking at, um, opportunities for a new, um, a new model. And then also one that could maybe capture those students now that are going to be freshmen, going to be sophomores at this, in the school system that this is not going to cover, and they've already started high school.
So the model that, uh, we wanted to create really was tasked with addressing. So the model that, uh, we wanted to create really was tasked with addressing uh, two problems that our community faces, right? So we're trying to solve for two problems in particular, and they're very related. Uh, one is education attainment in our service area. Uh, and the other is matriculation to college and hopefully specifically to Amarillo College. So Colin will walk through, uh, the two data slides that we have for you, and the first one focuses on educational attainment.
So this is just data pulled from the American Community Survey, the five-year survey, so that we can get the full service area. Right, so that we could grab all the counties that, that we serve. So this is educational attainment of the population, twenty-five years or older. You see, it's been basically no movement for all of these segments of five years. I show you there at the very bottom, the data set, the most recent, and what that looks like. So our service area, you know, and that percentage is what, about twenty-four percent, right? And then Randall higher, right, thirty-two percent, and then Potter down at seventeen percent. Okay, so not, not high educational attainment for our area. And as you can see, it's, it's pretty consistent through time. It, it really hasn't increased much in those years. The next one, this is data that we get from the, um, co-board, from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. And what this does is it shows that the high school graduates enrolled in Texas public or independent higher education the following fall. So as you can see, that's also pretty steady. There was that spike, uh, that we see in two thousand nineteen, and then COVID brought it right back down. So, you know, just pulled it right back down where it was before. Um, Canyon and A, C I S D and A I S D being two of our largest ISDs in the area. Um, so we've decided to pull that data and you can see from the most recent, that's at fifty-four percent, and what's that, forty-nine percent? So that's, you're talking what, forty-six percent of the students that graduate from A I S D do not show up in Texas public higher education institutions or, you know, independent or private higher education institutions. Uh, that could go out of state. That is, that is possible, but that's very low. Most students don't go out of state. Um, you can see that also with dual credit students. They don't then show up in out-of-state institutions. They go to higher ed. It's usually within Texas, right? So, um, that's not really great, you know? And then C I S D being lower than A I S D, so you've got forty-six, forty-seven percent of the students after graduating not going into higher ed. So we believe that part of this model can solve for some of this also, is to increase the educational attainment in our community and help high school students start college right after high school.
And I met earlier today with the superintendents from C I S D and A I S D, and Canyon in particular. This has become a huge passion of his, and so he's so excited about the opportunity to say, you know, our numbers, they can go up so much more. We have so many students that don't go anywhere. So what can we do? And he's really open to opportunities to connect with us, um, to help his students see college as possible, even earlier at elementary and middle school.
Why aren't they going to W T? Is it just too expensive, just out of, just beyond their imagination, because it's big and four years or?
The money's a lot of it from what they were talking about today.
It's expensive.
For A I S D, we are the destination if they go to higher ed, right? So we are the first place they come. Right, we are always, it's us, and then W T way down, well, W T like way, and then nowhere. Yeah, it's like, nowhere is the majority.
It's the top.
Then it's us, and then it's way down, it's W T, right? So most of the students in A I S D do start at M O college. If, if they're showing up at higher ed. Which is good for us, but there's a lot that just don't go.
Forty-seven percent that we need to look at and paint a whole different picture of what a college is, you know? I mean, those forty-seven percent, most of them never even think about going to college. I mean, they're just ready to get out of high school and, and do whatever, and, and a good many of them don't have much of a prospect. We need to somehow help them understand that, that we're a, an, a vehicle to help them become successful. Not necessarily for our college education, but to just have a put a carrot out there that they've gotta see. So many of them can't visualize it.
David, it sounds like what they're planning to do is bound to help out.
Yes. That is the hope, that this dude, this drive here will help with that.
So some of the, the need for a new model, um, one is to, you know, establish a new program that's gonna increase access across multiple ISDs. So thrive is only for A I S D, and there are so many other school districts that we serve, um, that giving that opportunity to their students for some type of a scholarship program like this. Um, there, I've definitely been hearing about it, and especially from organizations where, um, Amarillo is, aren't their only constituents, and they're saying, you know, how can we support and bring them to A C? Also building a sustainable model. So we wanna look at how, what model can we come up with to fund, so that we don't land in a situation where there isn't funding available, um, and we have to look at ending it would be the hope. And Frank, you wanna take the last two?
Yeah, sure. So we want a, a model that is, uh, primarily focused on improving education attainment. You saw the flat line for Potter and Randall. That's where we need to make an impact. Um, and I think we can, um, with this new model, uh, which to Dr. Woodburn's point, I think is gonna provide that carrot, that incentive. Um, and then also, uh, really with this new model that we're proposing, it very much is in alignment with what our state is wanting and how all of the performance-based funding is geared toward, okay? So, uh, building a talent strong Texas is kind of the mission statement for higher education in the state of Texas through the coordinating board. And what they're really focused on is getting as many Texans as possible to earn, uh, uh, high-value credentials to support our economic infrastructure and to meet labor market demand. And so what we're attempting to do for our region specifically is really a part of that total picture for the state of Texas.
And so with this proposed model, Badger Bound would not just be for Amarillo high school students, but for all high school students that are in our service area.
How many high schools is that? Seven?
Or, I'm trying to think of the main ones.
What's the area?
What, how many counties are we, when we're talking about counties, what are we talking about?
Four, four counties, right.
Oh, no.
We were looking at our targets.
No, our service area consists of nine counties. All the counties in there, Swisher.
So kind of the, our target ones to start off with, um, we were talking about, um, Amarillo, Canyon, Bushland. There's a fourth one, I'm blanking.
Allenport.
Maybe?
Didn't miss Hartford.
If it's already had theirs, uh, will this affect the Moore County campus? They have their own system.
Of course.
We'd have to look at that to see whether it would make sense, which is, which is works out better. Um.
They know how to make it work?
Right. Um, a big piece of this model is, um, just like you were talking about, David, what, when we're looking at moving the needle on these students seeing, uh, seeing higher ed as role for them, we need to be in the elementary and middle school level. And that's what I was talking to the superintendents about today. So as part of these revised MOUs, we're really wanting the school systems to let us come in and do fun and interesting activities, so these students and their parents, especially if none of them have gone to college before, can actually see, this is something my child can do. And they're finding out about it early enough that they can pay attention to their grades, so that they're getting educated in K through twelve, and they're, they're college-ready when they come to us, um, a lot more than maybe if they didn't even, they weren't planning on going, and now their grades are suffering, and they're not necessarily ready. We talked today about, how do we get them out on the campus so that they see themselves here? Because that's a huge thing, too. So both, both, um, systems were really interested in, hey, can we have a day when, for example, um, the students come out and we have some engaging activities for them, some fun career exploration, tie it like with a volleyball game, um, have, both of the schools have, um, hula hoop clubs for the kids. So if we're gonna let them at halftime go out on the port and do that, parents are gonna come, right? And they're very excited about ways to, that we bring them onto our campus, so they see A C as something that they can do. Um, this would be, um, increased student access to and opportunities for dual credit pathways by providing this model outside of just Amarillo. Part of this model would be a requirement that in order to get your next forty-five credit hours with us for free, is that you would take fifteen credit hours of dual credit when you're in high school. Um, and some of the rationale behind that, some of it's related to, that's gonna help us fund through House Bill eight and our performance to get the dollars, which you'll see in Colin's model. The other piece of it is that we know if students can have that time and get fifteen credit hours at a high school level, they're much more prepared to come and be successful at A C. They're gonna stay with us, they're gonna be retained, they're gonna graduate, and they're gonna transfer. So it gives them a much better chance of success there with the outcomes. Um, with House Bill eight funding, it does take some of this into account, as will, when Colin walks you through, so it could give us a sustainable model. And although what we're gonna be showing you is an illustration in the model of how we think we could fund it in, say, worst-case scenario without other funding sources, um, it's more from the standpoint to get your comfort level going on what we've run in our conservative nature with that. But this is gonna be ripe for partnership opportunities, for other funding to come in, to help support these students and help support the program, which are things we can be working on.
Ask a question, and maybe Jay, you're the one to ask. We've had a lot of this going on. Whatever happened to the No Excuses University? Work. At A I S D, we used to be a No Excuses college.
It, it went away.
It just disappeared?
Yeah.
I mean, because it started in kindergarten.
Oh, I know it, uh, Actus, Actus Elementary, that would be, they go into Dumas. But those I've been in, in classes there at kindergarten, they were, they had the little banners.
They had their college shirt.
Exactly what we want.
It's been going on, I think it's still going on down there.
At Dumas.
It, I have, I can't really tell you what I think in this meeting about what happened, but I just.
There was leadership change at the district.
Yeah, but I think that on the other side, the emphasis, yeah, the, yeah, and the emphasis was on a money-making endeavor.
Okay.
It became that, and it served its time, it served its purpose.
But it, it didn't if, if we dropped those students in the middle. I mean, I mean, it's like, we're trying to rebuild, recreate something like this. Let's learn from what we've already done and do it better so that we don't, I mean, we're not here to make money off the kindergartners for twelve years at least. Or, you know, until they're in dual credit age. But I mean, I just wanna make sure everybody knows, a lot of this has been going on.
Well, thank you.
And I was wondering about, you said forty-five, are we looking at coming from sixty to forty-five? No, um, they're in Dumas, it's, uh, sixty-six is their model. And then I think here is sixty.
Right, so if they have to get fifteen at the dual credit, then they would come to us, then that would guarantee them the forty-five free when they come to us. Colin?
So to that evidence-based idea, all right, so what you're seeing here are the two or the four most recent cohorts of students that could come in and then have three years to complete. Okay, so that's why it stops in twenty-twenty-one. So what you see in that blue line are the students that received fifteen hours of dual credit while then came to Amarillo College and their completion rate. So they're up to about sixty-one, sixty-two percent in the most recent cohort. The other are all other students in that cohort. So this is first time in college cohorts in the fall. They start, they come, we looked at it for three years, just like we always have. You can see that roughly, they are about twenty to twenty-five percent less, right, in the sense of their completion rate. So getting that fifteen hours of dual credit makes a significant difference in the likelihood of you completing. All right, so that's where the fifteen is also why the state chose the fifteen, because there's national research that shows a very similar trend. And we see here also at Amarillo College.
What about percentage that, that completed and went on to four-year?
Well, that entails both, that graduated and or transferred to a four-year institution. So that's both numbers together. So they're about sixty-two percent of those students that got dual credit in the most recent cohort graduated and or transferred.
Those ones that transferred, how many of them actually completed there?
That I don't know.
That's something we.
We can track it. I mean, we've got that data, we just usually don't look at it. But yeah, it's there, yeah, we, we could find out.
I've asked you this before, um, but I don't remember asking you, so I'm gonna ask you.
Sure.
Because I don't, obviously wouldn't remember the answer. Why do we only look at the first time in college, rather than the?
Well, we, we do look at both, but as far as looking at our outcomes measures, you usually wanna look at a cohort. So that is they enter at the same time and then follow on for so many years. So we follow on for three years. We could follow on for more, okay, but we just follow on for three years, because that's considered timely completion, completion within three. So that's why, just so we can get a rate, instead of just like total numbers. And that's why we look at the cohort.
And does the state look at it?
It measures the F T cohort also, and you see your completion rate of that. That's how they calculate the completion rate also. They use the first time in college fall cohorts. Yeah, it's a very common measure. So the state uses it, the federal government uses that same measure. Yeah, so it's not unusual to use it. So the model, right, trying to make this model, the question was this, that's basically the question I asked myself to, to make the model itself is, how many students would need to obtain fifteen hours of dual credit? Right, while in all of high school, obviously, in order to fully fund all of those students to obtain fifteen hours of dual credit and matriculate Amarillo College? How many, and what do I mean by that? I mean, because the state is going to give us thirty-five hundred dollars for every student that gets fifteen hours of dual credit. How many students would we need to get that in order to cover all those students that then come to Amarillo College? Just through state funding.
You mean to pay for their tuition to actually matriculate to brick and mortar?
That's right. All right, so if they get fifteen hours in high school, we get thirty-five hundred dollars for each of those students. If we take all, all that money and say, how much could we generate? How many students would we need that to happen in order to cover all the ones that then matriculate Amarillo College with fifteen hours dual credit?
But what about F A S S? Where does that fit?
That is, okay, so think of this as like the maximum amount we would have to pay.
So we're assuming nobody gets paid.
No, they get nothing else.
No.
We're paying for it.
Seventy percent.
I wanna go back to the question that Chris was asked earlier. How much does it take to get a, I guess, now we're looking at forty-five hours of college. How much does that cost at A C?
For, for us to pay for it? Is that like?
For a student to pay for it.
For the, for, for fifteen?
No, for forty-five.
Forty-five. Nine hundred? I think it's like nine hundred? Oh, no, I'd have to, I've gotta calculate, I'm trying to remember.
Each student would generate well more than.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you had finished, sorry.
Yeah, that's the point, that's the point, right? Yeah, so each student will generate more than.
But what was, so the cost is nine hundred per year, or is it just?
That's for full fifteen, for, for forty-five hours.
So for.
Really trying to remember exactly how much it is. I've got it in the model, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Student to get forty-five hours, our actual cost is about nine hundred, is that what you're saying?
Their cost. It's about a hundred dollars a credit.
There you go.
A hundred dollars a credit.
Yeah.
Well, I don't really charge, I mean, what does it actually cost us to educate at one student? If that's really what it comes down, if we're getting thirty-five hundred, what's our actual cost?
Oh, he's saying forty-five hundred. So is that like a hundred dollars an hour?
That's what I'm saying. That's for tuition fees, it's about a hundred dollars. That's the revenue side.
What's the cost? What's the actual cost of that? That's really what it comes down to. Because it doesn't matter what we charge, I mean, we charge what we charge, but what is an act of actual?
It's gonna be, depend on the program, right? If you go into nursing, versus if you're getting your gen ed, gen ed.
So average, nursing's obviously your highest, but is it, is it, you know, you know, two thousand, what is the actual?
We'll work to get an average. I know that that's, there's a model Colin's been working on, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, as far as this model, all we need to worry about is paying for their tuition and fees and then extra institutional costs. So that's, that's those all together, right? So tuition fees and then a million dollars added for other institutional costs. So that's, that's those all together, right? So tuition fees and then a million dollars added for other institutional costs for each of those students. But that's the model. So that's what we're saying. If that's what it's going to cost to 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 do it. Yeah, there's lots of other expenses, like you got faculty, some faculty get paid more. I mean, to try to calculate the actual cost per student would depend on program, would depend on how much faculty are getting paid to teach those programs. Some faculty get paid more, some faculty get paid less. I mean, it's way more intricate than just asking could we fund it entirely just their tuition and fees and other institutional costs like books and stuff like that? Just by the thirty-five hundred dollars we get for each of them for completing the fifties.
Books as well.
That should be other institutional costs. Just like, just like Thrive in that sense. But we're mo- mo- most of our books have moved to, you know, O R P, Open Educational, O E, Open Educational Resources, O E R. Yeah, so a lot of them are now like free, you know, you get it free. So that cost is going. So I remember the question I was asking, how many students would we need to get fifteen hours of dual credit in order to pay for the ones that actually matriculate Amarillo College having fifteen hours dual credit? Alright, so these are the actuals that we actually know. Okay, so we look at two different things, the school, the school year, right, the school academic year. So and then the matriculation academic year. So in academic year two thousand seventeen, we had seven hundred and what is it? Fifty, sixty-six, it's hard, I need new glasses. Seven hundred and sixty-six students actually got fif- fifteen hours of dual credit in that year. That's when they received fifteen hours. That's when they finished their fifteen. And that's the revenue we generated from those students. That revenue consisted of two things. We got, suppose that back in two thousand eighteen, we were going to get funded the way the state is now funding us. I just suppose that's how it was going to happen. Then that fifteen S C H revenue is the thirty-five hundred dollars for each of those seven hundred and sixty-six students plus what it cost them for the fifteen hours of tuition and fees they had to pay for. But the revenue we got from that. That's what that revenue is. And then they matriculate, we look at how many of those matriculated the next year, okay? And you see, so matriculation academic year eighteen, one hundred and twenty-five of them actually came. Of the seven hundred and sixty-six that got fifteen hours of dual credit that year, one hundred and twenty-five came Amarillo College the next year. The next academic year, okay? So you can see what it costs us to fund, to pay for the forty-five hours for those hundred and twenty-five students plus the one million dollars of institutional cost is what you're seeing there for the total cost of the hundred and twenty-five. And that profit's just the difference, right? Revenue minus cost. So we're well over, suppose the state had always been funding us this way, right? So the next year we had seven hundred and eighteen. Out of those and the previous year, one hundred and seventy-two matriculated and so on and so forth. So just take a minute, look at that and tell me, ask me if you've got any questions.
I have a question. Why is dual credit decreasing?
I understood, right? Why has it been decreased? Actually, it's now reversing and going back up. So it's just one of those things. I mean, just one of those things. Well, we had some.
Amarillo College, uh, Amarillo I S D had a different way of delivering.
Oh, that's true.
Credit.
Yeah.
Which they prefer. And so they weren't using our dual credit. They were using another sources of dual credit. And so that's why the numbers went down.
But they are reversing and they're headed back up already. We know that because as Chris mentioned earlier, we got more funding because we actually had more students get fifteen hours of dual credit in twenty twenty-four than they had projected us to have. So it's already headed back up.
I mean, my other question is one you probably can't answer either. I don't understand why you you would uh get fifteen or twenty hours or whatever uh dual credit in high school and then not do anything with it.
I know. It's a good question.
Like of those seven hundred and sixty-six and one twenty-five coming to Amar- up to A C, I'm sure a number much less than that went on to other institutions for, it just doesn't make sense.
But but remember, let me, I gotta add a little nuance of what you're seeing with these students getting the fifteen. Remember, they're not all seniors in that year. So seven hundred and sixty-six weren't all seniors and then only hundred and twenty-five came the next year. Some of those seven hundred and sixty-six could be some of the hundred and seventy-two in the next year that came.
Junior.
Right, you know, so it's just, they just happened to get fifteen dual credit hours in that particular year, but they may still be in high school for a year or so.
But still a very low.
It is. Yeah, yeah. The matriculation is low, even dual credit in general. It's very low. What we're trying to do is increase that. So that's, that's that. This is just like, this is what it actually looks like right now. So then this gets a little bit more involved because now I'm trying to create the model itself. Okay, so we have some actuals here. And then remember the question I was asking. I was asking how many students would actually have to get fifteen, not how many did. How many would we need to get fifteen in order to fund all the ones that matriculate? So I'm looking for like a minimum, like the break even is what I'm looking for, right? I need at least this many students to get dual credit the previous year in order to fund all the ones that matriculate the next year. You know, it's sort of like they're paying for all the students coming the next year to Amarillo College, right? The state's going to give us the fifteen, that that thirty-five hundred per student. So what you're seeing there in the actuals, this is what we actually do know. Those are the actual number of matriculations, right? So in twenty eighteen, we actually had, what was it, a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-five matriculated? We needed four hundred and thirty-two to actually come to break even. Alright, but we had seven hundred and something. Remember that, okay? So the break even turns out to always be below, in the actuals, always well below how many we actually have getting the fifteen hours. Okay, so that's what you see in all the actuals. So just, just take a minute to look at that, right? So we know how many actually matriculated. And then I, my model tells me how many I needed in order to break even.
So the the difference in that would be a loss as far as if that many, if we didn't get that many, anything that the number that was different than that. One, four ninety-seven is what you needed in twenty, what is it, three?
Yeah.
And um.
Pay for the hundred and seventy.
Pay for the hundred and seventy. But if four ninety-seven came.
We wouldn't be able to pay for it.
Would we be able to pay for it?
We would not be able to pay for it.
No, no.
No, no, but remember, these are actuals.
Okay.
They're actually the number of students that showed up.
And not counting Pell dollars.
Correct.
This is all in. We're having to pay for all of them.
For scholarships or.
Or anything else. This is last dollar in, just like Thrive was, right? Last dollar in. But remember, this is maximum. We would have to pay, so assume we have.
This is last dollar in, so this doesn't.
This is no dollar in.
This is, this is all.
Everything. Yeah, yeah. Assume no one qualified for anything. Assume they didn't qualify for any other funds. Is, oh, like with what I mean?
One ninety-seven, one seventy.
Yeah, roughly, it's not actually a third, but because as you're seeing, the model actually starts increasing a little bit different than it's. But just bear in mind, this was how many did we need in order to break even?
Take no full freight.
Having to pay entirely, right, for every student. Right, every student that came. And then the model starts with where you see the actual go to zeros. Uh, that, that's when my projections come about. Because what I wanted to see is let's, then this was the idea. What would we need in order to increase this five times the maximum amount we've ever had to matriculate Amarillo College? Five times that. That's where that very last number comes in. Is that eight hundred and sixty? Right, so that's five times the maximum we've ever had come. Alright, so this is projecting out each year what it would look like and then you can see correspondingly how many we would need. So we would definitely, the whole objective here is to increase the number of students getting fifteen hours dual credit. Whether they come to A C or not, increase the number of students getting fifteen hours dual credit. And then we know we should be able to fund all the students that actually do matriculate Amarillo College. And this is the break even model. This is what it would look like to break even. Totally, totally funded by state funding and the tuition and fees we got for the fifteen hours of dual credit.
And regardless of if they does this mean they finished?
They had to complete the fifteen hours successfully.
About the forty-five to transfer.
What do you mean?
Is that the matriculation? It pays out. I'm, I'm sure I'm not following you. We've got two problems. One is we want them to matriculate from high school to Amarillo College.
True.
The second is we want them to complete Amarillo College.
That's right.
So are both of those contemplated here? Because we get, we get money for that completion.
No, this is just the revenue generated by the fifteen hours of dual credit.
Okay, and the, the idea, I think the theory is the more we can get to go through dual credit.
Yes, sir.
The more likely we will get completion.
Which is backed up by the evidence that show currently it's sixty-one percent of them graduated and or transferred within three years. Sixty-one percent of the students with fifteen hours of dual credit. So for every single one of those that transfer, we get thirty-five hundred dollars. For everyone that graduates, we get a minimum of thirty-five hundred dollars. Yeah, so if you look at. That's downstream funding. This could all be paid for upfront by them getting fifteen hours of dual credit. Regardless of what happens to them after the fact, after the fact is all the funding we're going to get. Based on the fact we know they should perform better once they come with fifteen hours of dual credit.
That would be fifteen hours of credit in high school.
That's right. That's right. While they're in high school, we get the thirty-five hundred.
And then if they transferred here, do a high.
And then they get a, they graduate with us, we get more funding, right? But this doesn't require us to have that funding to fund this. High demand, forty-five hundred dollars, transfer, thirty-five hundred dollars.
My question is how are you getting that hypothetical numbers for the ones that are going to matriculate to A C?
Because what I did is I just calculated, it said, what I want is five times the maximum number of students we've ever had matriculate. And what would that look like? I, so I created a mathematical function that then gave me what that would look like per year in order to finally get five times the maximum. So it, that was like a goal, right? I just set a goal, like, let's do five times. This is not really a projection model. But I say, okay, based on what it's looked like, what would we think it would look like? This is, we want this to happen. This is like a goal, like, you know, this is what we would want to happen, not necessarily what will happen.
And Dr. Woodburn, the fourteen fifty-four number for twenty thirty-three under dual credit fifteen semester credit hours needed. If that might look like a big number, but that number is already available.
It is.
Like over time, our, our dual credit has historically been every year right around that two, two thousand range. And that's with limited access. So you think about um having now the the incentive to get into K twelve in a way that we have not been able to from the beginning, all the way up with different types of engagement, cultivating that belief in college, engaging with students and parents, working with counselors and principals. More people are going to take dual credit with us. More of them are going to hit fifteen hours and more of those who hit fifteen are going to matriculate.
And as a parent, well, you know, I have got a three, four, five-hour deal sitting in Amarillo College. I'm going to insist that my, my I S D serve this dual credit and that I want that forty-five free. I do it from somebody else, I'm not going to get that free deal.
This would expand to be beyond A I S D because you can offer to canyon.
So this so right now, this wouldn't include students who take from whatever the, the other provider I S D is.
No.
And you guys, who is that provider?
On ramps.
On ramps. And are they still using that? I'm looking at you, sorry.
They're not there anymore. No, I think they do still, but it's.
I think you have current knowledge.
It's, it's reducing, I think.
We're clawing our way back.
And have we had conversations, I guess?
Yeah, because it never entirely went away.
Provider did you say?
Who was the other provider?
On ramps. On ramps is what it's called. Really, it's U T.
Frank, there was another one. What was it called? Did Tracy Borman push?
Well.
Well, I mean, there's Grand Canyon University. Oh, oh, yeah, another college prep. Yeah.
So this, this model um really builds more than just the come take the classes. It really builds an entire funnel and a stronger relationship with the I S Ds to connect with those families, the kids and the parents much earlier on. It's going to drive success through the whole pathway, hopefully to their four-year degree, if that's what they're looking to do.
I have a couple of questions regarding vision and values.
Hmm hmm.
Um, my questions are, um, how many high schools are using our dual credit?
How many actual high schools?
Like, we have M O U's with thirty-two, thirty-four, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, some of them are real small. But still, yeah, yeah, I know. Absolutely, absolutely, because it would be open to everyone.
How many, like what percentage of those uh are people, are the students having to pay for their dual credit? Or is it free? Or is everybody's free in the high school?
No, you either pay for it or you qualify for the FAST through the state and the state's paying us for them to take it.
About forty-two percent of the students who take dual credit with us are eligible for the FAST program, which funds their dual credit. And those are students who qualify for uh free and reduced lunch.
Free and reduced lunch is the requirement.
We expect that operating a model like this, as we expand access to students who historically would not have had the opportunity to take dual credit, that the percentage of FAST students will go up significantly because you will have more students who uh have lower socioeconomic status being able to get on this pathway.
That's right.
Um, so you know, right now, maybe the model caters a little bit more to students who have more means, right? And for whom the cost of dual credit is not as prohibitive. Um, so forty-two percent likely to go up. And I think at the end of the day, uh, what you would want to see is a, a dual credit uh student profile that actually kind of mirrors minus the average age, uh, the student profile of the college, right? So it's not um um, so that, you know, that, the breakdown, race, ethnicity, so forth, is very comparable to what we see here, which would mean that, that um access has expanded significantly.
Yeah, and then educational attainment should then increase through time. I mean, that, that's the goal. The goal is to use the state's funding the way they've set it up in order to get more students to start college early. So thus they, they see, I can do this. Oh, yeah, I can do this, you know? By expanding that access through FAST, now the state's going to pay them to take dual credit. Also, they're going to pay for it, right? And then get more of those students to realize early on they can go on and go to college. And then, and then the hope is that we'll see that increase. More students getting fifteen and through that, more of them coming basically. Increasing educational attainment. Because if they come and they already have fifteen, I could show this, but sixty-two percent of them aren't completing within, within three years. It may take some of them longer. Let's understand. It takes nursing students longer than three years. All the nursing students take longer than three years to graduate from their start, right? So, um, but definitely they do do better.
So some of the things that we're keeping in mind as we've been kind of working through this model and this proposal, um, Johnny, just like what you raised, when we ran this model, the funding of it is only related to the thirty-five hundred that we get for them getting the fifteen credit hour, credit hours of dual credit. So all the other success points that we're able to achieve with our students coming and staying and completing, that's all additional revenue by the growth of this that we'll get. That's not part of this model of cost in order to get us there. Um, so and we believe this is going to lead to more success in point funding that we're going to get. And so it's an extremely conservative model by design. Um, also the additional funding exploration. So I know we have partners that potentially are going to be interested when we expand beyond Amarillo School District. Um, also just your question about how students pay, you know, what might the I S Ds be able to do to assist? So are there opportunities, for example, that for students in their high school that aren't FAST eligible? Maybe there's a way then that they're helping to cover those dual credit costs for them, for them to finish the fifteen. Um, and so talking through what might be um other opportunities for funding this beyond this, but again, this is kind of almost the worst case scenario for costs. But again, this is kind of almost the worst-case scenario for costs from an A C perspective of what we could hit. Um, and then Frank on the last one?
A good question. Okay, so, um, if kids are taking dual credit, and they don't have to take, uh, the English class or the math class in high school, right?
Well, it's dual credit, so it, it's functioning both ways, functioning both ways.
Does that cut the cost for the, for the high school in any way?
No, no, I mean, because the, the curriculums essentially are aligned, and, and in some cases, it's also aligned with A P, uh, although in rare situations, what it, what it will actually do, and the reason why this will ultimately be advantageous for ISDs to get on board, is that now they will be able to code students as C C M R, college career and military ready, uh, to receive additional funding for the state for students who, um, get up to three hours of dual credit math or English, or up to nine hours of dual credit. Um, plus, because one of our goals is to increase matriculation, they would then get additional funding, uh, with more students actually showing up at college. And if you remember from that early slide, um, you know, about half of their graduates aren't showing up. So there's a lot of opportunity for them to really increase their funding, which is at a premium for all of these ISDs. Uh, for that last bullet, additional faculty resources, I mean, the reality is, uh, and I would love to have this problem. But, um, if we're able to significantly expand, uh, dual credit enrollment, um, it means that we're, uh, gonna have to be, uh, very mindful to increase our, our faculty as well. Part-time and full-time, of course, and, uh, it also depends on the type of courses that you're, that you're offering. And a lot of our dual credit is gonna be general education courses for which we already have a lot of faculty. Um, but we also wanna expand in technical dual credit, right? Um, those trades, yeah, and, and so that is gonna be, um, certainly a challenge for us to overcome. But I think in the end, uh, the challenges that we face downstream due to increased, uh, dual credit enrollment is actually kind of a blessing in disguise, really. Uh, because it means the model is working. And I think one of the, uh, one of the effects of this downstream too is that we're gonna have more students coming to us who are more prepared for college, uh, who aren't going to need us in the same way that many of the students currently need us, right? They're gonna be ready to run that race, um, uh, in a way where they're much more likely to be successful, and they don't necessarily need us, um, although we'll still be there, um, to, to shepherd them along in the same way as they, as they run those miles, right? Um, so, you know, there, there probably are gonna be some, um, opportunities down the road where we, we won't have to invest as much in, um, wraparound services, for example.
Right.
Or tutoring, yeah.
Or Bob, whoever, how many freshmen do we have enrolled from high school total? I mean.
Like our F T cohort? Uh, what was it?
Fifteen, fifteen, sixteen hundred right now. But straight out of high school?
Or just straight as freshmen?
A little bit less than that.
Well, these would be.
These are supposed to be like right out of high school. You're supposed to come your next year, like you graduated high school, you start the next year, so.
Start that fall, yeah.
That's right, that, yeah, absolutely.
And I just mentioned as well, I think. The posture here is a little defensive as well, because the, the way that dual credit is set up in the state now, anybody can come in and offer dual credit, anybody, okay? So we have to protect our turf. Um, W T's offering a little dual credit, and we don't like that one bit.
Who is W T?
Yellows College, Boatswain. I mean, there's nothing to keep these people from muscling in on our territory, right? So it's important for us to establish something that defends our territory.
What is that, establish?
Right?
I'm asking you.
The dual, the dual credit.
Do this.
Free college.
By having, by having a program that, that, that expands it and, and really solidifies our position in this market.
So if there are junior, I'm sorry, sophomores and freshmen who, who have already, well, I guess the freshmen have it, sophomores who have already taken dual credit somewhere else, that don't count.
Doesn't count.
So they would have to.
So then I wouldn't get free tuition here.
Right, right.
Just a couple of things I just had questions about, and I think it's very important from what Denise said, you know, just making sure that the high schools are aligned with this, because, you know, I know some students at, like, Emerald, Emerald High, Bushland, who have tried to take dual credit in chemistry and things, it's not available right now. So they're gonna have to expand those to make sure that those classes are available so they can do this. And I think, Bob, you talked about, and what we could use is the effect that, what was it, the high schools can apply, was it military readiness? Or what, was it they can use?
That Fred touched on, this, this C C M R, the college career and military readiness. High schools get out, outcome funding based on, based on that. And as Frank was mentioning, there are thresholds by which, you know, they, they, if the students earn a certain number of credit hours in dual credit, the school gets more money, et cetera, et cetera. So the idea is, hey, look, we can make money on this deal. And the high schools can make money on this deal, because everybody's trying to get these students not only to completion, but college-ready. And as, as Colin mentioned, you know, when, earlier, this isn't just, I mean, what we're talking about here is, is not just an A C thing. Nationally, we're, we're seeing much better outcomes for students who take dual credit while they're in high school across the nation. And so this is really just piggybacking on that, doing that, making students college-ready while they're still a much better downstream.
Well, the state saw the same research, and that's why they're putting two streams of funding in for dual credit. FAST, free dual credit for students who have free and reduced lunch. That's part of state funding right there, and then thirty-five hundred dollars per student that gets fifteen hours of school credit. They saw the same research we saw. Our internal numbers show the same thing that showed nationally. Um, so, yeah, I mean, the state's saying it's a good idea. We're saying, why don't we use it to really try to increase that educational attainment in our community?
There, it's not just the money, though. They're passing legislation to make it
Oh, yeah.
uh, easier to access, um, for students. Um, and, and legislation that puts dual credit on level playing ground. So one piece of legislation that passed actually removes, uh, local authority from ISDs to, uh, elevate A N P over dual credit for G P A boosts, which my daughter benefited from, and the reason why she took A P courses, uh, now that, um, has been mandated, so.
Now you get the same boost for dual credit.
Get the same boost.
Boost for dual credit.
Yeah.
There's a maximum number of hours a student in high school can take?
No.
They have a diploma and degrees.
Get all the hours they want.
An associate's degree while you're still going.
That's right, ninety-nine or so.
Now, our ex-company or ex-education facility. And they went, oh, wait, now we can do this with Emerald College, so they can just take fifteen hours from Emerald College and still be.
Yes, we're, we're a jealous mistress. We want them to take their fifteen with us, whether they've taken fifteen with someone else.
Or not, yeah.
Well, I think we also just have to watch out for a couple of things, you know, how far out can we promise? Because who knows if the legislature will change things within five years, three years, you know, what is the length of that? And then what do we do for those students who, I do think it will sort of shift us a little bit towards more traditional students with the way that the high schools offer these, because traditionally, you know, Caprock, P D, not, probably have the same number of dual credit as the rest. So what do we do for students that are Caprock, P D, that are above the Pell level to get in free, but may fall in the gap if they don't take it? Because they traditionally haven't taken it, they may not have the same support from their parents or something to encourage that. And then finally, uh, we've talked about W T, and is there, I mean, has there any been thought ever, and Denise, you may know more about the history there, but, you know, with Blinn and A and M, you know, offering dual credit on their campus, they're already hurting for students, and we negotiate a way to offer dual credit on their campus like Blinn does with A and M, because they're going for free, and then they stay and automatically transfer them, if you, that might be a way to encourage those students stay on campus, and then we get another, was it thirty-five hundred if they transfer to them after that? And this is for some classes, if we're expanding this canyon or other areas of the Panhandle, don't know if it would ever lie, may, maybe, no way, but I know Walter's been at least open to students going to A C if they didn't have the money to go, and that's free.
I think Janelle visited at lunch today with Walter about that co-enrollment, Frank.
Co-enrollment, yeah.
On the co-enrollment piece, which we did find it.
Co-enrollment, we get the same amount we get for transfer students. So if they roll here, W T at the same time, become the true call roll to the true call roll program. Once they get fifteen hours, we get thirty-five hundred dollars.
I know, I figured that would never be, but that's great.
Oh, no, yeah, that's, that's part of the funding.
No one's done it. We've had several conversations, starting, uh, first with the College of Ag and Natural Sciences, and then ultimately, and most importantly, with some executive leadership, including the new Vice President of Enrollment Management, to develop some, uh, some co-enrolled, uh, dual admittance programs, um, where students would be both an A C student and a W T student. Um, and we're working through that right now. I think we've got a meeting, uh, next Tuesday or Wednesday.
So they can live on campus there and still be dual students.
So they're basically a W T student who, who starts with us. Yeah, and, and, and ideally, the, the course sequence is integrated where they're, they're not, you know, taking only classes at A C first and then at W T, but they have the opportunity to engage with their W T program and faculty. There's some, some cross-institutional transactions, engagement. Um, and, I mean, this, like, up to this point, all we've ever had is articulation agreements on paper. But, you know, that's all abstract, ethereal. I mean, this is something where, you know, W T is really coming to the table for the first time. It's, and like, they, they, uh, they want to be involved. Um, they came out to our Badger to Buff signing event. They brought their, their Buffalo. I mean, they're, they're all in.
And talking with, um, Dr. Windler, and I, I was, I met with him today as well, um, all of his struggles are around enrollment. That's what he's trying to focus on, even that, you know, what they're doing with dual credit now. And so the ideas between this model, as well as how do we strengthen those pathways um, for our students that, when they come here, they say they wanna go to W T, and so he's extremely open and excited to us figuring out some of these ways to be very intentional in how we're partnering.
But if they're already on campus, it makes that really.
Easier.
And students love that.
Some are, you feel like they can't, you know, or if they're from the rest of Panhandle or their home, how do they take classes? Unless it's online, so they might as well live there and do both.
What about the.
It's a matter of cost, usually.
Sixty hours. Offerings at, um, Amtech. Um, and, and our, um, versus the welding and that type of thing. Um, is there gonna be some, something offered in, in that line for kids?
Yes, uh, in fact, what our dual credit team is presently doing is working through every single one of our C T E programs to ensure that we have fifteen hours minimum available for these students to take in high school in order to benefit from this model. Yeah.
So then would, and like, a school like Amtech, and, and there's others that offer, you know, the, those classes, but, um, would that be working with, um, a specialty?
Yeah, like, so we would have these vocational tracks with, available for all ISDs. Um, we're actually in conversations with Region Sixteen, who has an R P E P grant. It's like a, like a rural, um, um, approach to creating dual credit consortiums for smaller schools that lack resources. So we are definitely thinking about these things, uh, because we wanna be able to provide the same technical education opportunities to, um, uh, happy I S D students, right? So.
Do you wanna speak to this slide?
Oh, yeah, so, or, or just Kevin wanted to do this slide. So communications and marketing has just been kind of, uh, working, you know, out at this point. Yeah, and so just kind of came up with some quick concepts, um, on branding, which is really gonna be important, because, um, you know, for us historically, dual credit has just been a thing that we do, that we take for granted. It hasn't really been strategic. And now what we're really selling is, you know, hey, you, you get to be a college student in high school, and that's really what this image is depicting, and, um, ultimately, uh, something like this would have a live student, right? Uh, but in the interest of time, we've got something that's on an A I generated. Uh, and then, of course, it's all about status and, and bragging, and you know how parents are. And this will be important, too, because if there are any I, ISDs, a, a point that Bob likes to make, who, who might be a little reluctant, we're, we're, this, uh, this kind of advertising is going to, uh, encourage P T A members to get involved with their ISDs who might, who might not wanna sign on for this program, right? Because they're gonna want these bumper stickers. They don't wanna miss out. They don't wanna miss out.
Community like they used to do, like. Do we know if the school districts, the ISDs, will they get any, do they get anything for having someone matriculate?
No, they get five thousand dollars for low-income students.
College career, military readiness.
And I guess.
For low income, they get three thousand, I just looked at that, three thousand for non-socio, non-low, not, non-low socioeconomic, and they get two thousand for special ed.
Okay, so there's value for, what we're offering us now, that they will actually get money from the state.
And they couldn't afford to pay for the dual credit for the students.
Yeah, I S D, there's millions of dollars on it. But they could get if they, if they meet, if they meet these thresholds, right? I just think they've been a little slower to follow the policy chain. Because what the state's trying to do is incentivize, and say, hey, here's the money, if you go out and do it, we'll pay you. That's what we're trying to do here, is get paid. Sorry, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, it's all, it's all tied together, yeah.
I'm good.
So kind of what we're, what we're thinking in this is, um, at some point, if, um, the board gets comfortable with the model, then we would look for a fiscal year twenty-six start, which means next fall, next August, um, would be, when we would start it. And we wanna do that because we think there's a whole lot, a whole list of things we need to do to really be ready to implement. One would be working on these M O Us, these intentional language of how we want the ISDs to sign up to be working with us on this. Um, and then also, um, developing, exploring partnerships for this model, not only also with the ISDs and how they can support us through this, but then other community partners and organizations that might be interested in, in assisting us. Um, we'd wanna make, um, an announcement and really create and implement a whole marketing and communication plan campaign that would go out so that people know that this is coming, and then, and also put together to be able to implement our, that K through twelve engagement at the start of next year. Um, so with that, again, we wanted to bring this forward of kind of where we're thinking and sitting so that we can get your thoughts, ideas, feedback more from you, so that we can keep working to build this to a model um, that we can implement and that you all would be, um, supportive of. So opening up to, I know everyone's been asking questions along, and I know I've been taking notes on things to look at, but any additional comments or questions?
I'm excited about this.
Have you considered, uh, just doing tuition and all those?
But everything could be on the table, so.
And I saw students that when everything was free, when it came time to transfer, they would ask me, who's paying for this? And it was kind of a detriment to them to think that everything, that all of education is free. So just.
Thank you. You know, if they, if they make a certain grade, then they can get reimbursed for the books, maybe? You know, kind of an in-between type thing?
The work will be.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
If they do have incentives. Frank, you might be the one to ask this. How much, how many hours of dual credit does it take for C C M, C C M R? I think it's just nine, isn't it?
Well, three. Nine, three of math or English, so.
Just standalone, you do math, you do English.
Yeah.
Uh we figure out how to, yeah, but then there's not a motivation for the district. Uh to encourage the fifteen other than.
That would be our model.
Yeah, the fifteen is because it's free college.
So you might, you're gonna have the parents putting some pressure on the schools.
The community. Education.
It didn't used to be that way.
Oh, my gosh, forever. I mean, we've got them all at homeschool. I mean, just because they could just register for a dual credit class.
Yeah, we're we're definitely working on that. We have relationships um with uh like the different homeschool networks. In our area. Not. The one thing about this dual credit model too is that it's it's fairly agnostic about whatever the impact of vouchers is gonna be. Because we can't have relationships with these uh students wherever. They go, whichever ISD or private institution or whether they're homeschool. So the dual credit, in other words, is available. Essentially to everybody, so.
Is this something that you all feel like that that you feel like we're on the right track? Do you feel like this is something for us to continue? Working towards firming things up? Sounds like it could be a good plan.
That'd be good to uh talk with the the DEF side of the.
Yep, definitely. I'll do that.
And their finances and all of that. I think theirs is mostly coming from donors.
Request, request for.
I think it's Dimas Education Foundation.
Yeah, probably, but this would cover.
Is it only for our service area then, or anyone that goes through? Does anyone go through AC or is that, does it have to be a specific?
Well, I think and granted, I'm still pretty new, but um it's that whole kind of managing. Do you go and start playing in someone else's sandbox?
Well, yeah, where's that sandbox stand with?
Exactly.
You know, in the panhandle between other.
There are lines too, aren't there?
But we do like, I know, like, for example, one of the, I think Claude, Claude's used us. They've used WT, they use Clarendon, they kind of just move around. Um but a model like this is, I think, is. Pretty interesting that their students then may want to say in their parents, hey, we want to go for AC because this is what you get.
Do the other community colleges in the area provide dual credit?
Some of them do. Yep, sure. Yep, Frank Phillips, Clarence.
Yeah, upper northeast Panhandle.
Even is over Dalhard.
But they may not provide free college based on.
You can always do things across. Service area lines with permission.
Oh, yeah, it's just, yeah, that's it. It's just all relationships. It's all. Yeah, and we, right, and so we and we do, and I just, I met with um Tex and and then a couple weeks ago, so we're staying connected on. Things and partnering, so. Well, thank you. This has been really helpful. I appreciate that. So we'll keep moving, moving on it. Thank you.
Thank you and thank everybody who's involved in this. Badger bound is a great term. I love that. So, item number nine is our last item of the evening, and that is our board self-assessment. All of you, and I guess you have a paper card copies of it tonight, but it was also in the packet, board packet. I really, as I looked through this and I saw about half. Increase, half the items increase and half the items decrease. So it was almost a wash there if you look at that. I saw some where we had um. Disagreement that that one or two people would disagree with something. I don't know that I found a strongly disagree. There might have been one, but I was trying to flip through there again and and make sure. But so my take on this is it's information for us. It's data for us. It's not, um, I I I don't, I think it's pretty positive. Actually, I think that it's going to, uh there's nothing to do with the data right now. Except just to look at it and discuss it in this forum if you'd like. Um, I don't think we need to go through here and try to. Hammer out each item and say, why do we, why do we have this or what can we do to improve this area? I would just like to open it up to you. Um and and get your opinion if you if you choose to share it. What do you think this board self-evaluation uh means to us? What did you see out of it? That much?
Sorry, Jay, it's been a while since I.
Right.
I think it was very.
You did or did something?
Yes, he did.
Due to some of the comments that were made, I think collectively we, there is a word in your word together. Uh collectively. I just think that we. Need more meetings like this to where we can collaborate, to gain trust with one another.
I think this has been really positive. And it would do more of that team building type thing. I mean, really.
This this tonight, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Um, okay. Anybody else?
Actually, I think.
Yeah. Who else wants to say anything?
Oh, I I I think uh it's just always important to remember, you know, we are a non political board. We're elected that way, not Republican, we're not Democrat. You know, Sean and I may be on the total opposite side of, you know, the political spectrum, but regardless. When we come here, the most important thing is students and taking care of those students, you know, have any. You know, we're not beholden to any outside groups. Now, we've had some on the right, some on the left that we've dealt with in the past, but. You know, those people may have certain interests that they want to, you know, convey on us, but. They're never in our meetings. They don't hear, and that's why this was so good tonight, because we could all talk, like, we could all figure things out. Well, they're out there just, you know, the five percent on either side trying to make everybody bad. You know, so that someone will pay attention to them, where really, we're the ones that are important and we have, you know, no obligation. To report back to them or tell them anything because they're not part of this, they're not elected. They just like, you know, they're just blowhards that like, you know, the attention. So I would just remind everyone, we're not political. We do a great job when we meet like this and take care of things and um I hope it'll continue like this because. Really, it's, you know, student education is the most important thing and raising our community and that's it.
Very well said.
Yeah, thank you.
Agree.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Um, you know, I've been on the board a really long time and it is nonpartisan. And some of the language we're using now has a lot more political connotations than we've ever had before. Um, we've always made decisions on this board for the benefit of the college and the students. And we've never looked at each other and said, left leaning, right wing, not conservative enough, too conservative. I mean. We've never used that language before in reaching our decisions. And I feel like we're getting there. So I think it's something to pay attention to.
I think society has moved that way too.
Absolutely.
Division between, you know, different groups and different this and different that and. You know, university, we're not university, but you know, community, it it's the university is out of many one. You know, uh the ethos and idea and um focusing not on the social issues as much as. The academic issues and things I think is important. Now, not everybody's gonna agree with that and we're we're gonna, we're gonna have different perspectives. If if you have a perspective that I don't agree with, it doesn't mean that you're being political toward me. It means we have different perspectives. And if we don't agree, that doesn't mean we've gone political on something. It's just different ways of looking at the same problem. But the same issues for the students, because we've got to keep the students at the forefront.
It's like we have to disagree agreeably for our students' sake.
Yeah, that's possible.
You know, come together and come out of here with that one voice that we're supposed to be and um. You know, everyone, the 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 whole thing isn't to try to create a monolithic. Culture of everybody's gonna say the same thing and when we come to our meetings like this, we're all gonna think differently. But when we walk out of here after a decision, it's gotta be together like that and none of the stuff that could happen. I I I I love all this discussion because I think it's important.
This is proof of what we can do.
Yeah, absolutely.
This board, you know, I think it's been very positive.
Yeah. And it's great to hear differing ideas at every meeting. Um, because I think if we if we all come to the perspective of, I never thought of it exactly the way you've thought of it. Because obviously I can't, I can't think of it the way you think of it. You've got a different way of looking at things, different experiences. That's that's good if we do it the right way, if we do it the right way. And I I I think the national picture has affected all of the the local communities. Because of social media and and things of that nature, it never would have gotten to this point had. We not seen some sort of weird thing happen in the nation that hopefully is settling. I mean. Depends on on your viewpoint, but I'm I'm hopeful we can get back to being Americans and not. Left wing Americans, right wing Americans, or you're this group or you're that group. We're the Amarillo College Board of Regents and that's who we are.
Jay, I would, I would, I agree with everything's been said. I, you know, from my perspective, I feel like it's. It's the lens we're looking through. And I think what what I've heard, and this is the way I see it, is I feel like. We've allowed some perspectives, some views that are more national and 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 perspective. And look at it like this isn't Harvard. And and for us to put the same lens against it, to me is is not accurate. And so I, that's the, that's the thing that I would say and that I see that I feel like where we've gone a little, where we get. I I think. I just say we just get in uh opposing views. It's because we're looking through a lens that's different than than the lens I see Amarillo College. And I believe Amarillo College is absolutely a hundred percent for our students. And I think Amarillo is a pretty unique place in across, you know, as far as our country is concerned. And I don't think the things that affect everybody outside of, you know, in the. On both coasts are the same things that affect Amarillo. I I just think we shouldn't. My view is we. Could we? I would encourage us to look at it from a perspective of. We've all, you know, love was one of our values and caring and and I still believe those apply.
Yeah.
And I think if we can do it that way as opposed to, you know, letting, you know, DEI. Critical race theory and those kinds of things, that I don't think those are issues that we have. So that's my perspective.
We have, on that case, I know we have policy that guides us to everything we do. That makes sure DEI isn't a part of that, right? Denise, isn't that right? It's the law and we have that rub rubric or whatever it is that allow that allows us to know we don't have that, you know?
Well, somebody on this board thinks we do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, that's a concern in that we all really look at that and make sure. Whatever this person has identified is either fixed or nonexistent. So that we know that we are complying.
Yeah, right.
And so and and that it's important that if if that's not. And we need to know it.
Yeah.
As opposed to having someone on our board that thinks that. If it is true, then we need to fix it.
We need to fix it, yeah.
So either way, it needs to, it needs to be addressed is is a is a thought.
But we need to have the evidence of something, not just somebody says or I heard or whatever. That was in here too.
You need, yeah, you, I mean. The anonymous sources stuff is just, you know, you can't, you can't fix a problem if it's an anonymous source. So I think. We got to figure out what specifically that is so we can look at it.
Correct, yeah.
The main thing that I actually have an issue with is that. We're here for for the students. And for their safety and anytime we cause the student to not feel safe. In a safe place, I definitely have an issue with that. And from reading from some of the comments. There is a member of this board that made a student feel unsafe by questioning. That that student was being themselves and about them. And I think. That is horrible that that student went.
How did you find out about that, John?
It's in the comments. It's it's. It's in here multiple times.
But I mean, how did you find out about that issue? Said, I thought that that was handled in a more.
It's in the evaluation.
I know, but whoever wrote the evaluation, who, that particular evaluation, how did they know about it? I'm asking.
I don't know who wrote the evaluation.
I I I think it was out in the college. I think a lot of people knew about it in the faculty and the staff. My understanding. You weren't here. Yeah, you were here. This has been a while back, but it's still impactful and we still need to learn lessons from things that that have gone on. You know?
And the flip side of that is if we don't, in occupational therapy, we call it work hardening. So if somebody had a repetitive stress injury. Um, being offended or being hurt would be like a repetitive stress injury. We have to work them back into the place that they can use that again, rather than than holding it and not ever. Using that arm or that hand or that type of thing. And we need to enable the students because they're gonna be. They're gonna be going from here into the world. And we need to be able to prepare them within themselves how to handle things that they could take an offense to. But does it change who they are? Strengthening them and themselves. So that they are able to feel safe. No matter what somebody else says. Because that doesn't make a person who they are. And there's there's a delicate balance in that. And I'm not trying to ignore one side, but you know, we can get too far on one side or the other of helping those students. Be ready for the corporate world, because the corporate world's not gonna cajole them.
I agree with, I agree with you in the fact that it is our job to help prepare them for.
And I'm not saying just in this instance.
Board members' job to say that to a student. We we don't need to be involved in that. And that's that's not a board's role. I mean, our role is right here. We don't need to be on campus. We don't need to be. It's my view. We're here for policy and we're here for the finances and we're here to hire you. That's all we're here for. We don't have to be on campus and we don't have to be saying offensive things to students.
Whether it's intentional.
Well, and I'm saying that's not our job to try to do it in a way that's gonna harden, make them more prepared. That's, I don't believe in that. I don't think that's our job.
The comments.
Well, I have something I really doubted whether I was gonna say or not, but. Well, I have something I really doubted whether I was going to say or not, but there was a comment about the, that the board did not consider the input from faculty, staff and the community. And I for one considered that. And I think probably everybody in here considered that. Now, what did you do with it? Well, you know, that, that was one, that was one thing, but there was also face to face interviews. There was a Zoom interview, there was a public forum. There were, there was input from board members when we were making the decisions. So I absolutely considered the surveys and I think most of us did. So to say that we didn't consider it, I thought was just, I don't know, I just thought it was misleading. I mean, I just think we, we did, and it sort of disparaged our process because I think we did consider it. And honestly, y'all, it was a really hard decision. And we're here to make hard decisions and we made a hard decision and it was a good decision. But it, you know, it wasn't easy and we had all this information that we had to do something with. And we did it and we have a new president, so you did a good job, yeah.
Yeah.
For the faculty to think that they were not considered is the wrong message, as they were.
They absolutely were, yeah. Yeah, for sure. It's almost like that said, that we didn't listen to them or we heard them had discounted what they had to say. And that's not true.
It's not true.
At all. In fact, that's what, that's what made the whole thing so difficult.
It was.
Well, I will say that on our committee that we had, our select committee that, you know, they include faculty, community members. You know, it was, it was very clear who everyone, you know, liked. And even we had one person stand up and say, do we even have to listen to? Because they really, and that's not saying anything bad about anyone else. That was just, you know, the faculty's input, the staff, the community members, agents, after that meeting. So I feel like we did, now, there may have been some faculty that weren't in on interviews and things and they may have, and they put, you know, but it's hard to, uh, always consider that when they have only seen one side.
It's true. Any other areas, um, any of the comments? I think the comments is where we got a lot of the, the juice. The, the, the actual.
Spicy stuff.
The spicy, the, the actual ratings weren't that bad, to be honest.
Well, there's, I mean, I do think there's a difference of opinion, you know? There's a pretty stark difference of opinion on some areas where you have one or two people and then everybody else. And I think that is a division that we need to figure out how to mend.
Yeah.
I think that's a good observation.
Yeah.
I think we got typically one, one or two disagreeing people from the rest of the group. And so we see it.
Sometimes a few more.
And so I, I think your point is a good one. We, how can we, how can we bring those closer together?
More cookies.
Yeah.
That might be hurting me.
Yeah.
So that we, so that when we have issues, we don't all go to our corners and come out fighting, using boxing terms and, or sometimes just stay in our corners.
But I think part of that is seeking to understand rather than to discredit on either side.
And your point that this has been a good conversation and valuable for all of us, I think, yes.
And it's being recorded and everybody can watch it. And, uh, I want everybody to know that that's what we're about, is coming together as a board, discussing things. It's not, everybody has to have the same opinion. Uh, it's not a rubber stamp type thing. We've always done it this way type thing. We listen to all viewpoints and then we make a decision. That's the way it is. We just got to get, to your point, got to get better at getting closer together on, on some of these things and not being so divisive and, and letting our personal feelings, it'll, um, um, divide us once we have, have made a decision. And again, it's information. That's all it is, it's information, something to work on, something to keep, uh, to take a look at. And, and, and everyone needs to have self reflection on this. You know, examine yourself and, and, um, I know I did, there were some things in there about me, I get it. Um, I, I, there are reasons why I've done some things the way I've done it. Um, some of it, I'll just be flat out honest, it's a matter of trust. There's some things that, that I've just felt like, uh, we couldn't trust certain board members in certain assignments. And that's why I've done what I've done. Now, if we can engender that trust and get that trust out there, there's going to be some opportunity to, to put some people in some different spots.
Well, I think if we keep the perspective on that, you know, we've all, and I especially, you know, I think of some tough decisions I've had to make lately, you know, about certain items, but I'd rather, I wasn't elected to make the easy decision. I was elected, I was elected to make the tough decision for the college of students, not just what would be the easiest for me, and that's not always easy, but we're here to do. That's, you know, taking the easy way out is why people don't trust politicians. That's, that's unfortunate what happens though.
I do have a question and it's about what somebody raised, which I hadn't given any thought to, is the goals for Dr. Connor. Where are we on goals for Dr. Connor? Has the executive committee made goals for her? I mean, are, are we going to do that together collectively at some point? I mean, because she's got to have something that we're going to measure her performance against.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that was a good point that we need to be working on that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, now that we've gotten through the first hundred days.
Mm hmm.
You know, the whole, all the meet and greets and, you know, what, what's next?
Yeah, what's next? That, that, I think, to be honest, it's not just the executive committee, I don't think, I think we need input from everyone.
But I thought maybe you had something there and so, yeah.
I, I, I don't know if we have that.
Well, we, we had talked about, so where, where I'm at now is I would, um.
The training.
Um, so I, I've pulled together, um, some different performance evals and performance goals that I've seen. Cause then the team polled Russell's from prior ones and even the timeline. And so what I was going to do, but we can do it anyway, any other way, um, was just based on that to kind of put almost kind of like this, like a, just another proposal together of like, hey, this is kind of what there tends to be out there and have it be something that you all can look at to then give feedback on and what you want to tweak, change, how you want it to work, to, if that's helpful. Try to do that, that was kind of what I've been working on, to then get out to all of you to then look at and make things and say, where, you make sure that you're giving me the, the focus. And then also have that on a, a, a timeline for the reviews and how they'll happen and that type of thing.
And that will evolve as this evolves because like picking workforce, you know, what, what are we going to have as a goal for, for Dr. Connor with respect to workforce? What will we want there? You know, partnering or getting so many new partners, I don't know however we want to do that. But I think that, um, we haven't done that yet. We're working on Frank's too, right? We're, we're, we need to get, uh, his training. We've talked about that, some things.
Another question, you know, like where are we on that?
Yeah, right. Not far.
Um, he and I have had some conversations and so he's really looking at, um, what things he's, where he sees, um, some things that he wanted to bring forward. And so then, you know, we can work too on not only what he sees, but then what I might see that's good for leadership development. Um, so we're, we're working together on coming up with that might look like. And then also, um, we have a really great opportunity that, um, he's interested in with Senate Bill thirty seven that's come out. Part of that is creating a, a, a committee with, at the coordinating board that's going to be looking at all those gen ed curriculums for all the community colleges. And they're looking for people to be on that lead committee at the state level. And Frank's interested in doing that, which I think would be a fantastic opportunity. So we're working on filling out, um, the nomination form to put him in for that. But he and I have been talking in our one on ones as it relates to, um, professional development and training and those types of things so far, but we don't have anything documented.
Do you have any feedback or just update on how your relationship with Brenda and all is working with your, your, your coaching?
Oh, coaching.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's gone really well. It's been extremely helpful, um, not only to have the coaching opportunity with someone who's a president as well, but is in Texas and in the role that she's in at TAC. And so, um, we, we meet on a weekly basis. And so we've been having really great conversations. It just, it relates to, um, you know, be, being a new president and trying to work through things. But also it's been fantastic as we've gone through, um, session, legislative session, things are popping up at TAC, um, that she's right there as a resource that I can bounce things off of, hey, this is what I'm seeing. Or how do I connect with somebody because I have this question? Um, and so, I mean, it's been so beneficial for me, I've really been enjoying it. She's, and she's wonderful to work with. It's, pardon me?
Brenda.
Brenda, Brenda Case.
Case. Yeah, you have a Brenda.
She's at Kowor.
I know there's two, two important Brenda's.
They don't compare much with the Houston.
Somebody mentioned having the Texas flag.
Oh, somebody put that in there.
And I thought that was a good idea.
I would have to relearn it.
Well, we talked about that, um, for sure. Um, anything else?
I do have something.
Okay.
And maybe the answer is no. Is there anything we as a board or we as a college can or should do for Texas? The devastation.
I mean, um, yeah.
I mean.
What did you say?
The devastation in Texas, the flood, flooding. I mean, I don't know, we've done some stuff or something, I can't remember what.
But that was regional, yeah.
I don't know.
To me, I feel like we have to be really careful as a college, nonprofit, taxpayer supported about how we, you know, I don't know what the law is, but I just think we need to be careful.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe, maybe it's just a nice lot, but there's really not much.
There is one little town that has not gotten, I can't remember the name, yeah, Mickey Wilson. There's a bunch of them, I mean, just.
It's a devastation for everybody.
Yeah, there is a huge foundation there that's very, it's identical to Amarillo Area Foundation. And they support the region, just like Area Foundation does. And, you know, they raised thirty million last week.
Four employees, so the Area Foundation here is helping them.
They will support every, other people, I mean, other towns, cities, villages, whatever they have.
Thirty million.
But that was last week, I bet it's double now. Well, H E B Foundation gave five million. You know, H E B's home, home is in Kerrville. And so H E B, the family, the foundation and the grocery store gave five million together. Patrick Mahomes gave a million and a half.
Yeah.
Not counting the truckloads of food and products.
On top of that, yeah, they have all of that going on, yeah.
There were some little kids at Stratford that raised ten thousand for it.
That's awesome. That's great.
All right, well, I didn't mean sidetrack.
Thank you then. Um, there's another item on the agenda. Jern, all right, okay, we have a, anybody, anybody want to second that? All right, all in favor, say aye. Thank you all for your meeting and have a good rest of your summer. And I guess we get back together in August, in August.
And a question about admissions students that.